Excuse me, I'm taking off my... Just ignore me for a minute. Sorry.
Rossat?
Rossat, then? Does, uh, it still says it's muted. Does that matter?
Well... Uh, it says, "What's muted?"
The CVS stream.
Oh, yeah, that's my, um, extra computer to run the two live streams.
Okay. All right, uh, I will get started with the Finance Committee meeting of the 11th of January 2021. Really, the agenda is fairly short. It's just one item. Uh, it's to review the, the First Amendment to the 2020-2021, budget for the, mainly the general funds, what I'm going to review. There are four other funds that we're also looking at.
Wait a minute, I'm, I think I'm in the wrong meeting. Is this building in sight or finance?
Finance.
Okay, I'm in the wrong meeting. Bye. Where am I sp- am I supposed to be in building in sight right now?
You don't, you're not supposed to, but you can still stay. It's okay.
No, it's okay. It doesn't matter. Okay, I'll just listen in. I'm sorry, guys.
So, uh, I'm gonna share my screen and start with, uh, the budget, and I'm hoping that you guys can see the first page of the budget.
I can.
You can or cannot?
I can.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we can see it.
All right, uh, so I'm gonna spend some time on reviewing the budget from, I guess, a high-level, assumption basis. And basically, what we'll do is we'll review, I'm gonna, the fir- this first sheet's gonna compare, and I'm gonna do some high-level explanation on the changes to when our original budget was adopted in June of 2020 to this current amended budget. And I'll go into more detail, with the changes in the revenues and expenditures for the general fund budget on the next page. The next page has a lot more detail. Uh, so, I will start with, mainly, I'm gonna be focused on the Baxton area that says 2020-2021 First Amended Budget, which is dated tonight. One of the things that, I, I think I should explain to start is if you remember back on June 15th, when we adopted this budget, we adopted the budget based upon the information that we had at that time. Uh, one of the things that, one of the main adoption assumptions was that the state would be reducing our per pupil allocation by $650 per pupil. Uh, that was the information that we had at that time, and that's what we used. The other thing, other major, item that was part of the revenue, uh, budget was, uh, also budgeting for the, the millage that passed last, uh, last year. That is included in what the original budget. However, the other thing that was not budgeted and, uh, back in June was the, any of the revenues and/or expenses associated or affiliated with the CARES Act money, the Federal CARES Act money, and the Corona Relief Fund money that we're receiving from the state and federal government. So those changes all had to be incorporated into both the revenues and the expenditures. So if you look at the top portion, which is the revenues, you can see our original budget back in June, we adopted a budget of about $162.8 million. With this First Amendment, we're looking at a revenue budget of about $178.9 million. That is a change of roughly $16 million, which is obviously significant. Uh, that's probably the most significant budget change I've ever taken. And again, the main two portions of tho- those changes are the original budget had the $650 per pupil reduction in, uh, calculated into the revenues, and then we did not have any of the budgeted, uh, CARES Act money in because we didn't know what was, what we were gonna be receiving. On the expenditure side, you can see that the expenditures, we are looking at an, an original budget of about $166.1 million back in June, and now we're looking at a, an amended budget of about $178.8 million. A net change, or a net increase of about $12.7 million. Um, the June budgeted expenditures that we adopted did not have any of the costs for the labor settlements from August and September. Obviously, we didn't know what those numbers were, so we really couldn't budget for those numbers. And then in addition to that, uh, the expenditures did not include any spending any of the CARES Act money that, uh, was not there at the time of the budgeted adoption. So if you remember, the vast majority of the CARES Act money we used uh, for the purchase of the student laptops for the one-to-one initiative. So all in all, if you look at the changes in the overall budget, um, we are looking at an adopted budget of expenditures exceeding revenues back in June of about $3.3 million. So we are looking at a deficit. Uh, this current amended budget with the major changes and other changes that I'll get to on the second page, we actually have revenues exceeding expenditures by just under $100,000. So all in all, we have a breakeven budget, which is great. You can see the effect on the fund balance. Obviously, the fund balance, based upon this number, will go up, you know, a little bit. The one thing that you also have to keep in mind is, if you remember, the, my budget is usually, we're, we're usually expecting our budget to come in about a million dollars better than what the overall budget is. So our assumption at this point, as of right now, is that the budget, the revenues will exceed the expenditures, you know, hoping and continuing, moving into the future of about, of $1.1 million. Now, one of the major assumptions that we made in this budget revision was that, starting second semester, we would get back to some sort of face-to-face instruction. And what I mean by that is um, there are a lot of revenues and expenditures that are tied to fee-for-service, community education, preschool, uh, athletics, whether it's gate receipts and/or pay-to-participate. Those types of areas and school-age childcare are currently incurring expenses, and we don't have a whole lot of revenues to offset some of those expenses. So our assumption is with this budget is that we will get to some form of face-to-face instruction, beginning with the second semester. If that does not happen, or if we, if that gets kicked further down the road, then obviously, in our second amended budget that we'll take to the board in May, we'll update that. So as it sits right now, the first revised budget is everything that's happened up through December, and the assumption that we will get back to fate, some sort of face-to-face instruction for second semester for the district. All right, are there any questions about this first page and any of the assumptions that we made? All right, I will move to the second page. The second page gives you a little more detail of the changes in revenues and expenditures. Um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, our total revenues are, we're expecting our total revenues to go up about little over $16 million. Um, and that comes from a combination of probably seven or eight different items. But mainly, the two that I mentioned, the $650 per pupil, change, and then, uh, the grants through the, uh, CARES Act. But looking at the top line, you can see that one of the changes that the school aid fund made or was how our, how we were going to be funded based upon our blended enrollment. If you recall, for multiple years, our blended enrollment, or how we were funded, was based upon 90% of the current year October, pupil count, and 10% of the prior February count. Well, the state, in their wisdom, the legislature, knew that we were walking into a, a very unknown arena where school visitors could potentially be losing quite a few students. Obviously, we were one of those. Our actual enrollment going October to October fell 871 students. Now, based upon the old formula, that would have been pretty devastating for us. Uh, at, you know, $8,111 per pupil, that would have been a pretty major hit to our budget. But they changed the formula so that, uh, what you would be receive is a, what they call a super plan. It was a greater of really your enrollment for the current year or the enrollment for last year, whichever was greater. For our June budget, we were assuming, uh, 207, roughly 280 student drop in our enrollment, and obviously, that came in a lot steeper than that, but we were funded on the super blend, which actually brought us in about 72.4 FT higher than the budget. So based upon the super blend, even though we, we saw 871 student drop, our funded decrease was only about 200 students. So that generated an extra roughly $600,000 in our, in our budget. Who knows what that's gonna be beyond this year? One can only guess, but at least for this year, it definitely helped us from a funding standpoint. As I mentioned on the first page, the $650 reduction that we assumed in the, um, First Amended Budget, was not, there was no reduction. The state found a way to fund all schools and hold them harmless going into this current school year. So based upon that, changing that from a decrease of $650 per pupil to just a flat enrollment, funding generated about an extra $9.6 million in revenue for the district. In addition to that, uh, they also gave us a one-time per pupil increase of $65 per pupil, which we did not obviously have budgeted, and that generated an extra $1 million for the district. I mentioned a little earlier that the fee-for-service area of the district, so those are the preschool, community ed, athletic pay-to-participate, athletic gate fees, um, and, uh, school-age childcare, because we were, for the most part, um, closed for the vast majority of, uh, the first semester outside of elementary, the budgeted revenues that we looked at, uh, we had to decrease by about $1.9 million. And again, that $1.9 million is the assumption that we get to some sort of normalcy beginning in second semester, that these programs start to operate and start to offset some of the costs uh, to run those programs. Uh, our interest income, everyone knows the interest rates are way down. Um, to give you an idea, last year, I think we, we earned over a half a million dollars in interest income. Uh, this year, I think I'm budgeting about $50,000, and we'll be lucky to hit that. It's a significant decrease because of where the interest rates are right now. I think, uh, going out even six months, the interest that you can earn on any type of money is a tenth of a percent or 10 basis points, which is nothing. So that, we had to obviously decrease our interest income significantly. Uh, the ISD countywide millage, we did budget in the first, first, or the original budget in June. We got additional information from the county that we would be receiving a little extra money, about $242,000 more than what we budgeted in June, so we're accounting for that. Uh, the net change for the MIPSers Offset Funds, obviously, that's the in and the out of the money that we send directly to the retirement system. Uh, you'll see, obviously, we have an increase of about a half a million dollars in the, uh, revenues, but also a half a million dollars in the expenses, so those offset. From a grant standpoint, uh, we're increasing our grant revenue by about $6.6 million. And again, the vast majority of that is the CARES Act money or ESSER money. You can see at the bottom of the sheet, six points, almost $6.8 million of that money there is for the CARES Act money. So overall, if you look at the overall revenue changes, uh, those are the major areas that account for the roughly $16 million of, of additional revenues. And really, it's tied to two main areas. It's a $650 per pupil reduction that didn't come, and then obviously, the CARES Act money that we received uh, after July 1st from the federal and state government. From an expenditure standpoint, uh, as I mentioned from the first page, uh, the net staffing wage changes, uh, is up about $3.6 million, and that's a combination of our labor agreement settlement costs that we had in August and September with all of our labor groups. It also takes into account any of the leaves that we've incurred uh, across all of our union groups, whether it's teachers, uh, paraprofessionals, custodians, food service, any of those folks who have taken leaves, we've adjusted the, the budget for, for them, and then any additional or any new staff that we've hired are incorporated in those wage changes. The health insurance and cash-in lieu help, that's actually down about $400,000, and that's directly tied to the leaves. Obviously, if we have people on unpaid leaves, they're not carrying the healthcare. Um, so we adjusted our budgets down for that. Uh, the retirement expense and FICA expense, you can see, is roughly about $1.8 million. And again, that's basically directly tied to the net staffing wage changes. Uh, you know, it's a percentage of our wages. So those tie directly. Um, workers' compensation, we're reducing the budget by about $115,000. That's, uh, we're self-funded for workers' comp, and obviously, we have less, less people at work. We have less people getting hurt, and therefore, we have less expense. So we're adjusting that downward based upon the experience we've seen through December. Um, I've already mentioned the MIPSers Offset Money, uh, that nets between the revenue increase. Um, under the custodial contractual services, right now, we're reducing that by about $100,000. And again, our, we mainly use the custodial contracted service for custodial subs, and there are very few, if any, custodial subs right now out there. I mean, we're struggling to fill just posted positions, let alone the, uh, contracted service that we have with the outside source. They're struggling to even find any bodies to provide us subs. So we're adjusting that downward. Bus fuel cost is down about $225,000. Again, uh, we are closed for a good portion of the first semester. By not driving the buses, we don't have the fuel costs, so we're, we're adjusting that budget downward. And then the same with the utilities, obviously not having a, a lot of people in our buildings, we've, and a lot of after-school functions, which are no longer there. Uh, we adjusted our mechanical systems to accommodate that, and thus reduced our, our costs for, uh, our utilities, and, and that's mainly in the area of electricity. Um, in the food service and SAC or school-age childcare transfers, um, that is, that is the cost overruns that we're running in those areas. Because obviously, with food service, we don't have, we've only had, we only had elementaries in for about, what was it, four weeks, six weeks? We've had middle school and high school out, and then we've only had, again, with school-age childcare, we have expenses, that's part of that program that we're, we have to cover. So therefore, you see roughly $1.2 million that we have to supplement those areas in order to cover the, the cost of not being in operation. And then, as I mentioned with the revenues, the grants, uh, we have grants expenditures that are going up about $6.6 million. And again, the vast majority of those costs are related to the student laptops that we purchased in August and September. Um, we have received, uh, Sarah told me that we've received all of the, the first 3,000 computers, and we still have not received the second wave of computers, which is the roughly 9,000 computers. We have a ship date from the manufacturer of February 8th. We're hopeful that that's when we'll receive them. Um, all of the suppliers are really struggling because there are so many districts and so many others who are, um, purchasing, uh, computers that there is a, a big, uh, issue with getting a lot of those from, you know, many of them are manufactured outside of the country, and, and they're having a very hard time keeping up with the demand right now. So if you look at the roughly 10 items or so that are listed above, those all total roughly about $12.7 million of expenditure increases, and you can see, we, we kind of moved back and forth in many areas, but the vast majority of them are related to, from an expenditure standpoint, the labor agreement settlement costs of August and September, and also the purchase of the laptops through the grant funds.
Scott, I've got a couple of questions about the expenditures. The first, in regards to the health insurance cash-in lieu, the people that were on leave, um, pursuant to the Families First Corona Relief Act, were we paying insurance on those people in addition to their two-thirds salary?
I don't know that. Uh, let me, Adam would know that answer. I don't know that off the top of my head. Um, but let me double-check with Adam, and I, I'll get you a response. I'm not, not, I wanna say yes, but I'm not 100% sure on that, so I, I wanna verify that.
Okay, thanks. And then, um, in all other expenditures, what kind of things are included in that line item?
Uh, well, it's, they net to about $6,000, so not a whole lot. Um, there's probably a lot of movement that all net against one another. I mean, there could be multiple things that could be in there. Um, again, what I tried to do is I tried to look at the major changes, and really, that's, it's almost kind of like a plug figure based upon the, the items that are above. It's, it's the remaining balance of the $12.7 million of what's left above. So, there was a lot of movement, a lot of things that netted against one another, but outside of those top 10 items, the vast majority of the budget really didn't change too much from an overall standpoint.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions about this page? All right, the next page, um, it's really a, another summary of the changes in the revenues. I think we pretty, we've hit this pretty well. There isn't really any other areas that I really want to focus in here on. If you have any questions about this as you review it, uh, I know it's in my memo to the board. I think this, this page and the next pages, uh, but for the most part, again, we've, we've really, captured a lot of these changes in the sheet, all the major changes in the page before this. Uh, if you notice, the area that I'm highlighting, here is all of the changes. Oops. Yeah. I, here are all of the changes with the... These are all the funds that we received from the federal government for, from the CARES Act, the Corona Relief Fund. So there's a, a large portion, I mean, that, that's a lot of one-time money that we've received from the federal and state, state governments, and also the county. So it's a, and the interesting part is each one of these areas, we have to account separately for. So it's not, it's not all one lump sum amount that we have to account for, but each one of these areas, we have to account for separately with separate revenues and expenditures. And all of them have different criteria, too. Uh, here's the summary of the grants. Again, we've already reviewed that. All right, I'm gonna flip this around, and we will look at... All right, um, from a expenditure standpoint, another way to look at the budget is, to review it based upon object code, which is, uh, part of the school, uh, School Accounting Act or School Accounting Manual. And really, what I've done here is I've, I've summarized things into major object codes, which if you look on the left side of the top box, wages, benefits, purchase services, and then really supplies and all other. And I, I think if you look at this, you can see some pretty major changes in the budget and, and how the expenditures have changed. If you look at the first couple of columns with the original budget, you can see our wages and benefits are roughly 89% of our total budget, roughly. Um, and that's typically where we're at. On just about any given year, plus or minus about a half a percent. If you notice, going into this year with the First Amended Budget, that, that percentage drops almost, well, more than three full percentage points. And you would, you know, you would think, "Oh, my God, what, why?" And, 'cause it kind of surprised me. Well, if you look down under Supplies and Materials, you can see our Supplies and Materials went from 5.4% to 9.4%, or it increased roughly almost $8 million. That is the direct relationship of the grant funds that we're spending, um, on the laptops. So while this seems to be skewed a little bit, it was a little surprising to me, but once I saw it, I understood what it was. Where our wages and benefits are actually down below 86...
Hello?
Denise? We can hear you, Denise. So, um, the, when you look at that, it, it might stand out a little bit for you, but remember, there are roughly $7 million worth of expenses that have been pretty much dumped into the sup- the capital outlet side of the budget that are, that is skewing that number. Um, if you look at the wages down in the bottom four boxes, you can see how the wages have changed. Uh, again, we were projecting the wages to go up about $3.6 million, and the vast majority of that is because of the labor agreement, uh, that we came to, a gr- the labor settlement that we came to an agreement on with all of the labor groups in, in August and September. You can look at management, teachers, and clerical are all up. Um, but it, you would ask the question, "Well, why would bus drivers, custodial maintenance, and the paraprofessional aides be down?" That will, between those three categories, we have, again, a lot of vacancies right now in our positions. Um, I believe we have eight open bus driver positions. We have three open maintenance positions. We have six current, six and a half current open custodial positions, and because of those positions not being there, we had to reduce the budget. So for the, for the first half of the year, we adjusted those budgets downward, which brought down the total cost in those areas. The other thing you can see is under Other Wages, you can see that we're down over $700,000. And again, a lot of those are tied to really the non-union areas, the community education, the pool, and those areas that we don't have people working. And so we've reduced those wages also for the first half of the year through December. Um, under the Table B, which is the benefits, we've really gone through those pretty significantly, so you can see those changes based upon each one of those benefit areas. Under Table C, the Purchase Services, talked about the custodial staffing, um, water sewer, we're down some. Uh, community ed, you can see we're down about $220,000. Uh, some of our community ed, uh, that we offer are to outside companies or people who are on, uh, purchase service contracts, so those costs are down because we're not running the program. Uh, security at the high schools is down because obviously, we don't have kids in the school. Uh, that's a contracted service. So overall, you can see purchase services are down about a half a million dollars. And then under Table D, you can see our Supplies and Materials. We have electric down about 200,000, bus fuel down over 200,000. You can see the cost of laptops, about $7.1 million. And then you can see the two transfers that we're making to help offset the cost for the closure of school-age childcare and food service to, uh, make those programs whole for, through December. So overall, you can see the budget, uh, this is a very challenging budget to, to amend. Even, even looking forward, um, it's still really difficult to project what- it's still really difficult to project what revenues and expenditures are going to be moving forward to the last half of this year. So we, I guess, took a pretty optimistic approach and assumed that at some point, we would get back into some sort of face-to-face instructional model for second semester. But again, if that doesn't happen, we will adjust our budgets again in May when we normally do, and we'll take that into account. So are there any questions about this sheet or any of the other sheets that I've gone through? I know it's a lot to, yes, look at, a lot of numbers. But overall, I think it's, considering what we've gone through for the last nine months, to have a balanced budget, I think is pretty, pretty amazing. We're very fortunate as it sits right now. So it's, it's a nice place to sit right now. Right? Any other questions? All right, then I will stop sharing my screen. And everyone has 10 minutes before the organizational meeting. So thanks for listening. And again, if you have any questions, just email me or give me a call and I'll run through anything that you want me to. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
Bye.
Do we have, are all the board members on so that we can begin the organizational meeting? I see Jolene, I see Frank. Beth is on. Jill, are you still on? Hello?
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, am I, am I muted? No, I'm not.
No, I'm here.
Okay, so, and then George.
I'm here.
Robert, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. So that we can begin the organizational meeting. And I'm only starting the meeting because I'm the longest-serving board member. So as soon as we make our initial nomination, whoever becomes president takes over the meeting at that time. Okay? So I'd like to call to order the Chippewa Valley Organizational Meeting of Monday, January 11th at 6:18 PM. The first order of business, we're going to waive the pledge. The first order of business is to nominate for President of the School Board. I'd like to make that nomination for Frank Bednar, please.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, are there any other people that want to nominate someone different? Okay, having heard none, then Frank Bednar is our president by acclamation. And now Frank, you will take over the rest of the meeting, correct?
Great, thanks so much. And thanks for having me as your president for another year. I've enjoyed it, it's been challenging, but.
That's an understatement.
You've been doing a great job, Frank.
You have, you've done a really good job.
Yes.
All right, so moving on, we'll go to, any nominations for Vice President?
I'll make the motion to nominate Denise Aquino as Vice President.
I'll support.
Now you ask if there's any other nominations.
Yes, or any other, is there any other nominations out there for Vice President? Anybody else? Hearing none, acclamation, Mr., I'm sorry. Mr. Aquino is now Vice President again for this year. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you, thank you for entrusting me with that position.
Okay, next we move on to nomination for Secretary of the Board. I will nominate Ms. Biden.
I'll second that. Well, if somebody else seconded it, that's fine.
Me, Jolene.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Jolene can.
Okay, is there anybody else interested in the Vice President? Is somebody else for Vice President?
No, for Secretary.
Secretary, thank you.
Sorry, Frank.
That's okay. Hearing none, Ms. Biden will be Board Secretary for upcoming year.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Lastly, nominations for Treasurer, Treasurer.
Nominate Jill.
I will support that nomination.
Any other nominations for Treasurer? Hearing none through acclamation, Mr. McZack will be our Treasurer for another year. Congratulations, Jill.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, do it. Next, let's talk about subcommittee names for a second. What I proposed, I don't know if anybody wants to change or wants to disagree or want somewhere else. But I thought to make it simple, we would just simply take Jolene and then insert her for wherever, you know, Laura was and Bob would go in for wherever Andy was. That would kind of take care of that real quickly. So any questions about that? I can read through the subcommittees if that's agreeable.
That's fine.
You can read through them if you want to, but that sounds, that sounds reasonable to me.
Frank?
For 2021, we didn't have them.
Wait, before you read through them, can I just, there is one change that needs to be made.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's just on Kim's side, but Jill should be the Chair of Finance, not, not me.
Right.
Kim had me listed, but it should be Jill.
Okay, we will still note that. Ms. Adlam, did you be able to make that note?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so Billy inside would be consisting of Denise Aquino, Frank Bednar, and Jolene Andreasko, with Denise being the Chair. The Curriculum Committee would be Jill Demickzak, Robert Wojtovich, and Beth Piden, with Ms. Demickzak being the Chair. The Operations Committee would be Mr. Wojtovich, Ms. Piden, and Ms. Aquino, with Mr. Wojtovich being the Chair. Finance Committee would be Mr. McZak, Ms. Piden, and Mr. Sobal with Ms. Demickzak being the Chair. Personnel Committee would be Ms. Andreasko, Mr. McZak, and Mr. Wojtovich, and Ms. Andreasko would be the Chair. Lastly, Technology would be myself, Mr. Sobal, and Ms. Andreasko. And I would be the Chair of that. So if no other further objections, we'll move to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
By Ms. Piden.
Part.
Or by Mr. Sobal. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Piden.
Myself, yes, Mr. Sobal.
Yes.
Dr. Andreasko.
Yes.
Ms. Aquino. Oh, Ms. Aquino?
Denise, you're muted.
Yes, sorry about that.
No problem. Mr. Bednar.
Yes.
And Mr. Wojtovich.
Yes.
And Mr. McZak.
Yes.
Okay. And so meetings adjourned at 6:22?
6:22. Okay, thank you, everybody, and we will see you briefly. Hey, Kim, if there's anything you need from us, as far as, we are moving pretty quickly there.
Yes, I, I'm emailing Beth.
Clarifications, okay.
Let me see. Frank, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to email Beth and see if she can, I joined the meeting late, see if she can screenshot me the information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Kim.
Ms. Adlam? Adlam? This is Robert. You're muted.
Hi, Robert.
Well, if you could screenshot, can you screenshot me that, too?
Sure.
In the email or something, just so I have a record of it?
Usually I'll type it formal and then I'll send it out to everybody.
Okay, so we don't have to wait till prior to the next meeting?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You'll get it tomorrow.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, I believe everybody's here. Ms. Piden, would you just give a quick roll call, so we can make sure the board's all attendance?
Dr. Andriasko.
Here.
Ms. Aquino.
Here.
Mr. Bednar.
We're present.
Ms. Demickzak.
Here.
Mr. Sobal.
Here.
Mr. Witojic.
Here.
Myself, I'm here. All are present. Mr. Bednar.
You, Ms. Piden. Okay, I'd like to call to order the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education meeting for January 11th, 2021, at 6:32. We'll waive the pledge this evening. Prior to starting the meeting tonight, we did lose a member of our Chippewa Valley community. A teacher, a great teacher at Huron, and I'd just like to take a moment of silence for Ms. Dawn Graham. Okay. Um, move on to item B, additions, deletions. I have none this evening. C, recognition presentations. We hear from Mr. Roberts this evening.
Sure. Okay, Mr. Bednar, I just, I just want to talk, we just did a moment of silence for Dawn Graham, and I just want to say a few words about Dawn. I had met Dawn before, and I knew her a little bit, but as I've asked around and through this process with her funeral last week, I just heard some things that I think are really worth repeating about Dawn, because I really think she was a special teacher, a special teacher, a mother to two students at Windout Middle School. She lives outside the district and brings her daughters here.
Okay, here.
And also, she left behind a husband. Dawn had been employed in our district for 14 years, and 11, 11 of those years, she worked at Huron as both a resource room teacher and a special services department, and as a teacher consultant. Dawn was all in. She loved her students, she connected with them, she always advocated for them. And for any parent of a special needs child, you understand the necessity of an advocate. And Dawn was it for those kids. And I, as a former principal of an elementary school and a teacher in an elementary school, people like that play really important roles, because they really provide the bridge between the special needs that that child may have, and their experience in a general ed classroom, so Dawn's role was important. She cared deeply about instruction. She served on numerous district committees. She was a grant winner from our foundation and from the credit union, so she would take the time to put in grants to get materials for her kids. She was involved at school in being a science olympiad coach, of being part of the district, our school's positive behavior support committee. And, and I think this really is so important, she truly cared about her fellow staff members. And one thing people said about Dawn that kind of stood out, even if you read the little online comments, was that she was always there to support other people, other adults, other students, or students, and she had a wonderful sense of humor. So I just want to thank Dawn's family for allowing her to be a part of the Chippewa Valley community for the past 14 years. And I really think that all those students that she taught probably will just have some really positive memories that will sustain them through life, because we all know we think of our favorite teachers quite often, and I think when kids think of their favorite teacher later in life, they'll think of Dawn Graham, so so thank you for that, and thank you to Dawn for her years of service. It's obvious that she went way too early. Okay, I'm going to do a presentation tonight for a board and for a community.
Hey, Ron, could I just, real quick, I'm sorry, I just wanted to also mention that our new two, two new board members, before we started into the meeting, our two new board members joining us for their, I guess their first and second meeting now, would be Dr. Jolene Andriasko, welcome, Jolene, and also Mr. Robert Witojic, welcome, Bob, to our board. So, look forward to working with you and being part of our Chippewa Valley team here, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a unique time to come on as a new board member, so you'll pick it all up very quickly, so, welcome to both of you. One of our agenda items this evening is to reconfirm our extended COVID learning plan. And so I just want to talk about that, because the presentation I want to make relates to that extended, extended learning plan, so if you could bring the PowerPoint up on the screen, please, Sarah. There we go. So, what I want to talk about tonight is, I want to kind of frame the decision that you will make as board members later this evening, related to the instructional model that we'll go forward with at this point in the school year. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to kind of give a little timeline of where we've been, basically since October, and I'll present some data, data that we've looked at to help us make decisions, because I want you to relate how the data looked when we made those decisions, to how the data looks now, when you're, when you're asked to make a decision later this evening, so we're going to start on October 1st, and Sarah, if you'd please just move forward with that, because this was the night that you as board members voted to return elementary CLP, which is our creative learning program, and that's K-12, early childhood special education, and the Great Start Readiness Program, that's when you voted to return them to school. So, the data we were looking at at the time, of course, was some township data. In other words, how COVID was impacting our community on October 1st. And as you can see here, at the beginning of October, the most recent data we had to really examine was, was about the confirmed cases of COVID in both Clinton and Macomb townships, and you can see the numbers there. There was 193 confirmed cases in September in, in a Clinton township and 211 Macomb township. And at that time, the seven-day rolling average, which is figured over the number of cases reported on any seven-day given period, and one day drops off and a new day picks up, and that's how they calculate a 70, 7-day rolling average, was 82 at the time. And that's all of Macomb County. So, the first part of this data is more specifically about our community, and the 7-day rolling average is about all of Macomb County, but it's all interrelated and gives you a flavor for what was going on in our area at that time on October 1st. And the positivity rate at that time was 5.1, which, which, which was risk, the risk A category, which is the second lowest risk category, so it goes from A to E with a, I can't remember the name of the lowest category, but it's not a letter, it's just a couple of words, but we were in the second lowest risk category, and that was October 1st. So, now, Sarah, if you go forward, because you voted to return the school, the students to school starting on October 12th for these programs, and this would be in a hybrid program. So let's, let's go to what we did the next week, then, on October the 19th. On October the 19th was the day that you as board members voted to return high school, commencing on November the 9th. And again, the 7-day average was 129 at that time, so you can see it's kind of creeped up from October 1st, but the positivity rate still is in that lowest risk category, so still, I don't think these are alarming numbers. It's, it's, but it creeped up a little bit. So, on October, then, so then we voted, the board voted, you voted, to return our students on November the 9th. And then let's go just two weeks later to November 2nd. On November 2nd was when you as a board voted to delay the high school start. And let's just look at this, because you can start see, you start to see the difference in numbers, and how it would impact our operation had we opened. We're going to start at the bottom here, and the 7-day average had gone up to 284, which is more than double what it was two weeks prior to this, and remember, that's county. The positivity rate had increased up to 13.9%, putting it in category C, that that's third from, or fourth from the bottom. And then if you look above, you'll see what happened between September and October with specific number of cases in our two townships. So when we, the decision was made to read, to, to put elementary in was really based on September data, which was 193 cases, and then in Macomb Township, 211, so one month later, now, the October numbers were in, and so you can see in Macomb Township, not quite tripled, and about two and a half times in Clinton Township, so it had significantly changed in that time. Also, if you recall, at that time, that's when we were hearing a lot from health experts in the state and the nation. First started with just the, the spreading that could take of COVID through Halloween, through that event, and then what they expected to have happen based on Thanksgiving and family gatherings, and then over the holidays, which we just returned from. So those were kind of factors, those were the factors that figured into the decision to delay the start of, of secondary, because it really, at this time, looked as if at this point in time, it was not going to be getting any better. So if we go forward here and to the 16th, which was the date of the vote to return K-5, and also the other programs we had out there. Now, also, prior to this, was when the governor required that high schools take, I think it was a three-week hiatus from, from in-person instruction, so that had happened also in the time, because the all indicators pointed to quite a surge in numbers happening, and you can see here on these numbers, and, and these numbers now are, even though we made the decision on November 16th, these numbers really represent all of November. So the predicted surge that was, was made by health officials really did occur. And the Clinton Township numbers, when... And the Clinton Township numbers went up to, you know, over two thousand here and McComb Township over twenty-four hundred. So you can see. That what was, what was predicted to happen did happen. The seven day average went up to three hundred and sixty-one daily and um, and that was on this date, November sixteenth. With a positivity rate now going up to the D category of seventeen, seventeen point eight percent. So. A lot had changed in, in a month and a half of where we started when we were putting kids, uh, students back in school. Um, to where we found ourselves in the middle of November. So if we go ahead there, Sarah, please. I chose this date here. Well, it's, this is about the month of December. I chose a date below in the seven day average. If you look down there, that was the highest seven day. Rolling average in McComb County so far with seven hundred and thirty cases. Per day were being identified of COVID. The positivity rate was now in category E, which is the highest. And that was on December second. You can also see though, and this starts to tell a different story. So we went through November with rising cases, higher positivity rates. And it really kind of peaked at the beginning of December. Because following, following this date, the positivity rate started to decline, the seven day rolling average started to decline. And you can see, if you look at the two um, pieces of data at the top of the screen, Clinton Township in November. Having two thousand one hundred and thirty-seven identified cases. Now by the end of December had had one thousand two hundred and seventy-three. So we really hit the peak at the beginning of December. McComb Township, same thing from twenty, just over twenty-four hundred to over thirteen hundred at the end of December. So. We do have a different picture um, starting in December. So if we go to the next one. Which takes us to today. Right now, based on current trend data. Um, this was the most updated information I could get at the time. Which was over the weekend and hadn't changed this morning. If if Clinton Township stays on the same, same tra- trajectory that it's on right now. Based on that, at the end of January, we would have six hundred cases. If McComb Township stays on the same trajectory, trajectory. We would have four hundred and fifty cases and that's just based on how many cases we've had so far, about one third of the month. Times three, that's it. That's how that's done. Um, the seven day rolling average now is at two twenty-three. So it's come down significantly, um, as had the positivity rate, which now has returned to a risk, a risk C category. Um, so you know, if you look at the numbers in January, there's a little bit of plateauing, a little bit of decline. Um, I think that the, the decline was greater earlier. Now it's, it's kind of leveled off somewhat, but still, if you look at the numbers of just the number of cases in. In Clinton McComb Townships, if it was, if it plays out like this, you know, if something were to happen and it becomes worse, this is not gonna be how it looks. Or things could get better and it could be less. These are, these are much more like October numbers. When we made the decision to um, to put the elementary in. So based on all of that. And what's I think is positive in there, if we go to the next one. Some of the stuff I've said already, the indicators of decline since the peak of December second. Um, case numbers are now consistent with numbers when elementary students were last in school. And I really think our, our previous in-person hybrid, I think was really very successful. Um, we, we had many schools which really did not deal with any incidents within their schools. Um, there were no quarantines um, for students or staff. We did have a couple of schools that were hit a little bit harder. They had more staff members that were um, positive or staff members that needed to be quarantined because of um, maybe a family member that was positive. Maybe a spouse. Um, we had, so we did have more quarantines with, with kids in a few schools. And really, at the time we took them out, we're always having conversations with our district nurses and for those who don't know, we have two this year. Um, one specifically works on COVID and communicating with families and staff members in the health department. The other. Probably has been doing seventy-five percent of her job, doing the same thing, even though she has other duties. So. And and they started to see what was happening. By November sixteenth, when we pulled the elementary back to um. To remote instruction. So if you move forward with that, please. So let's just, I wanna talk just briefly about remote learning. Um, we hear it from people. Remote learning has been successful for many of our students. Um, we received emails about that. From parents, um, that they, they've been able to create conditions to, to make this work. And and it's been, it has been positive for them and I really. Um, just wanna recognize our staff for that, um, for what they've done because um, they're all brand new teachers this year. They've learned how to teach in a new way and I, I really feel um, very positive about. The effort that our staff has made to meet the needs of our students. But, but on one, on that's, on one hand, on the other hand, remote learning, as we know, we talked about this earlier in the year. It just has limitations for many of our students. It has limitations for those with special needs. We have over eighteen hundred students in our, in our um, district with I E Ps. Um, that are through the special services department. So we, we have a lot of, a significant number of students. Who, who have special learning needs and remote learning can be very challenging for them. We have over, just over a thousand English learners in our school district. Again, um. Asking these students um, to, to rely totally, totally on a. A remote learning um, mode is very difficult. It also is difficult for those with limited resources and I kind of think that the last two kind of go together. Um, with limited resources because it, it does take. A significant effort on the part of our families to help make this work, especially the younger the learner is. Um, it's just family situations that result in an inability to provide the necessary su- support. Um, you, you might, and and some of this has come through um, with. Our, our younger students, you know, I've heard from those, uh, parents of those. Of the difficulty of, of what parents need to provide at a really young age. So if you combine um. Uh, maybe a parent's work schedule, maybe being a single parent and then having to make the commitment of being. With your um, child for the significant amount of time you need to, to be with them for them to be successful. That can really. Um, present, present some, some learning constraints. Um, plus just the younger you are, I think it's a little, it's more difficult to. Look at a computer all day. And I will say, I think looking at a computer all day is hard for anyone. Um, but the younger you are, I think there are some, um, greater challenges. So with all of that. Um, I just go the next one. This is the recommendation. Of not only my recommendation, but the entire cabinet. We've talked about this significantly. Um, we've talked about our um. Safety protocols we have in place, how our elementary program worked. When it was in a hybrid. When we were operating the hybrid learning model back in October through the middle of November. And so based on all of our discussions, um, our recommendation is, is that we do return our elementary students. Uh, to, to a um, a hybrid instructional model on January twentieth. And we would also return these programs, um, GSRP, ECSC and CLP. On January twentieth. And these were our target dates that we had set when we pulled these programs out and delayed secondary. And secondary, we're recommending. Um, the return of that program, grade six to twelve, and then the middle and high school CLP program on the same day. So. Those students who are part of our, our special education program would return with, with the kids in their appropriate grade levels, six and twelve. So. Um, that's the recommendation, but I wanna also go over this next page. So Sarah, please. Um, this is the cohort, we've um, worked a lot. And especially as a we, it's really fallen on um, human resources and educational services to work with the. Our teachers association to, to look at their, look at how we were doing hybrid instruction. And to see if there's some, some tweaks. That we think based on our about six weeks of experience with elementary of how we can make it stronger. And so it is, this is slightly changed. So for parents that are listening to this, um, it would be a little bit different. So we had a, staying with our two cohort cohorts. And we have a Monday, Wednesday cohort, uh, Tuesday, Thursday cohort. What we did in the, the first run with this. In October was we did a um. A um, a rotating Friday. So kids would be in school through, or five out of ten days. Every other Friday they would be in. And what we're looking to do in, in this time is to change that and make Friday a remote learning day. Um, and that would also include our ECSC and CLP students. Now our ECSC and CLP students would not be in cohorts. Those students would be in full on face-to-face and we can do that because they have smaller class sizes. So we would have them in on Monday through Thursday, same as cohort A and B, except for, just to make the point clear. ECSC and CLP are not in cohorts. They are in four days per week um, with their entire class. And then on Friday, um, all of these students would have a remote learning day. I think there are some advantages to this. Um, one thing we learned from our elementary teachers. Was just, just um, the challenge of, of um, managing. Um, consistency in learning, teaching and learning for your students by flipping them on Fridays. Um, that was hard to do. So you'd end up with groups that would be in different places in the curriculum and I think for teachers, I think this is an important point. Because they're managing a lot to do all of this. And um, so Friday, a remote learning day allows them to see all of their kids that one day a week at the same time. And if kids are young, they probably turn on the camera so they see their classmates. Um, and then it also gives, gives our um, custodial staff an opportunity to clean the building, which we think is. Still very important not to have students in the building that day so that they can really give it a good cleaning. Now GSRP, the Great Start Readiness Program for young students, um, is a four day program. And it just remains a four day program. So really, if we bring them back, they're gonna do what they've always done, which is a four day program. So it's just the way that program is structured. So, so that's the um. That's the plan for hybrid instruction. So with all that I've presented and I should have told you at the beginning, if you wanna jump in and ask questions, feel free to do so. Do you have questions about what I? What I've presented so far? I wanna, I wanna make a few other comments, but I can, I can hold off on those and give my voice a rest if you have questions.
Hey Ron.
Sure.
Um.
Robert.
A program or a plan to get us back to full face-to-face?
Yeah, that's a good question and that, that was gonna be part of my comments. Um, so it might be a, a beautiful segue right into this. Um, so I think I'll just start with that then. I, I wanna back it up a little bit, Robert, before I get to your answer, but I'll do that. Our, our students, w- w- we all know, because we've lived this for, since March. Living in very different times right now. And. Their, their education really, in a sense, has been interrupted. Um, great pains have been taken to provide um, everything possible in a remote manner. And as I said, I, I really. Um, commend our teachers for doing that. Um, but. But the context in one, in one, in which one learns is really important. And if we think back to our learning experiences in school that were meaningful to us, they usually involved other people. And with what's happened with, with, it's been this, uh, ne- uh, necessary to happen over the last so many months. Is the fact that that's all been removed. The kids really are more isolated. You know, they get up in the morning, they stay in their own homes, they do their online learning. So much of what makes learning meaningful and give it a context has really been removed. I think, and our teachers have said this all along, i- is that they all wanna be in a classroom when it's safe. Um, they know that that's where they do their best work. That's where the best learning occurs. And. I really think that we can create the safety net that our, our teachers and our students need in a hybrid program right now. And, and really, I think a hybrid lends itself, um, although a student may, will not have their teacher as much. I think there is so much more value in the days that they do have their teacher, that this makes up for that. I, I just wanna speak briefly before I go on to a home visit I made last week. I was invited to go to a home, uh, of a, a family home with two students that um, attend Ottawa and one that attends Algonquin. And I, I was so impressed with what I saw and what this family had done in a remote setting. They had created little learning corners in their, in their family room for their kids. And decorated those corner, corners with um. With just whatever related to their school day, maybe schedules or posters or things like that. And that became those kids. Like their learning area. And they did that for all three of their kids. And, and I, I was able to watch teachers teach into a classroom or teach into their home. And I watched, I watched these students, I watched the parents and how they interact with them. And I was so impressed with, I was so impressed with what teachers were doing and the fact that you're doing this. To maybe twenty-five to thirty students sitting out there at home in their computer. And you're talking to a computer, which I find hard doing right now. And these teachers were doing it and these kids were paying attention. But it really does look different. It looks different and it is different because there's no context for that learning, other than the kids are in their, in their home. Teacher's doing a great job of instructing, but that immediacy that so many kids need as they learn was not able to be there. And, and I think really, that's what our kids need to return to. And I, I, I feel strongly that it's not only. K two or three five, but it's also our middle school students and our high school students. And I think our hybrid allows this and it's our next step up. Now to get to Robert's question, um. We've talked about returning to um, a, a, a full face-to-face, but we really don't think. We're there at this point in time. A lot of effort has gone into planning to uh, make for a um, a safe environment. I- i- in living in a, in a pandemic and a lot of work was done on the hybrid. A lot of effort was put into it. A lot of different protocols were examined. And in order to maintain the safety, we think of both, of both students and staff. Um, at this point in time, it's, it's the way it needs to be. Our um. If you think about one of the um. Greatest strategies that we hear constantly in the media about keeping safe at this time. One is about wearing a mask and one is about. Good hand hygiene and the other is always about social distancing. And. Bringing all of our students back right now and that, in bringing them all back right now. Um, creates some challenges which are impossible to overcome with social distancing. Uh, but we look at our classrooms and how many kids we can really fit into a classroom. And um, as I've said earlier in different presentations, I've been in classrooms in, in all of our schools. And I specifically can remember some in Chippewa Valley where the kids are wall to wall right now. In, in the middle of a pandemic, I don't feel comfortable with doing that. I think about kids riding our buses to school every day. I kid, I think about kids sitting at lunchroom tables, shoulder to shoulder every day. And it just raises a lot of concerns for me. Um, I think about youth bathrooms and the number of kids we would have in our building going into bathrooms and how we maintain cleanliness, about movement in the hall. Um, about any of those things, because so much of what we do in our, in our buildings and many are large, is really about. Um, kind of crowd control and, and you would, you would really have no control of anything. We think with. Um, half of the students in the school on any given day, um, plus minus our kids are in a virtual academy that we can really keep it safe. Which is really, I mean, people need to feel comfortable in a school building right now and we, we think that that can all be achieved. The um. We do look forward to a, a return to full-on traditional. We're hoping. That if all the powers that be that are in control of um, vaccine rollouts can. Get that moving, that, that maybe we still have a chance um, this year, late in the year to get our kids back in full on. I know some other people have done full-on in other districts in other places and sometimes you'll see. Prokeial schools do that. And, and I think their conditions are completely different. They're usually running an, an elementary building, one elementary building. Or one high school building. Um, they might have some options on, on maybe. They might have some options on maybe kids don't arrive by buses during the day. Or they have options within their buildings to split kids up for lunch, lunchtime. I don't know. But that really are, that's really some of the challenges we have is we just run extremely large buildings. And they are so efficient, and they lend themselves to so many wonderful programs that we can offer our kids that small buildings can't can't. But when it comes to a pandemic, small might be better. But having said all that, we certainly do talk about what we can do to move kids back to full face to face learning, but we also know that that will take some time to come to fruition. So but certainly is our goal. So so that was kind of my presentation there and there are no other questions at this.
Mr. Roberts, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I have some concerns about lunch. And I guess maybe I don't, and Dr. Blanchard is on the line. And maybe he would be better able to answer this question. But I know that when our kids went back in a hybrid model back in October and early November, we had pushed our lunch monitors and lunch aids and food service workers down from the middle school and high school into the elementary school so that we could be properly staffed. Right now, we're missing, you know, we have 17 openings. So what does that look like in terms of staffing during our lunch periods?
Superintendent Roberts, I can.
Yep, please do.
Yes, Board Member Biden, we have roughly 17 vacancies vacancies for lunch monitors. When we were in the hybrid program for elementary, we absolutely rolled down staff to make sure we had full coverage across our elementaries. Because while we while we have half of our students in each building, they're still using the same number of tables. So they still have to get wiped down and cleaned down. So that's that is a challenge that we're gonna that we're working on here. Supervisor Leonie in my office, where, in fact, we're emailing just a little bit ago about potential strategies, other staff members that we potentially could repurpose, perhaps there are staff members that work with particular groups of students on an A day but don't have them on a B day that could become available. That, interestingly enough, is our is our biggest area of need is lunch monitors. That's our biggest gaping hole. You know, again, pre pandemic, what we tried to do is we tried to bundle. A lot of people don't want to take a lunch monitor job for many reasons. God bless the people that work in a lunchroom. But part of the issue is it's not full time employment. It's only a couple hours. So what we've tried to do is we've tried to couple that job with other jobs, crossing guards, general para pro work that they could float around in the building and do as well as being a lunch monitor. And people still weren't interested in that. So again, you know, I know I said this early in the fall when we had a lot of community members looking to volunteer, and for the purposes of the pandemic, we weren't letting volunteers in, but we are certainly welcome. And our jobs are posted on the website, and we'd love to have people apply so we could process them, and we could put them to work in the lunchroom. But to answer your specific question about the exact strategy we're going to use, we don't have that down to the to the T, but we will have the lunchrooms covered. It's just a matter, we are concerned about a couple of buildings because a couple of buildings in particular, they don't have any lunch monitors. So those are the really that there's two that we're really most concerned about. Custodial services, we thought we were, you know, we thought we actually were at full capacity, and then we had a couple vacancies come up. But we are our first shift, our day shift is completely covered, our second and third shift, we have three vacancies across the district and our second and third shift. Without having community in the buildings after hours, we do believe that we'll be able to handle all the necessary cleaning protocols that's outlined in our in our plans. Subs, we don't have sub teachers, and that's a statewide issue. It was a pre pandemic issue, and it's heightened. It's even more of an issue now. We have 38 long term subs that we have employed through the district that we don't typically do that. We normally have 15, and we use them as floaters. We have 38 right now. Our goal was to try to have 70, and we were offering a higher daily rate. But we have 38 long term subs. Now, we've done some different things with with our teaching staff. So if a teacher is asymptomatic and is able to teach from home, then they what they end up doing is teach from home, and they can teach back into the classroom. But that still requires a body to be in the student's classroom for daily management. And so it requires a sub or a teacher to teach on their prep, so they have to go in there. So that's going to that is going to present an issue. That is going to present an issue for us, but we believe that we'll be able to cover between our teaching staff and other groups. And our subs will be able to handle that. Our clerical were covered there. Para educators, specifically special education para pros, we had nine vacancies, but of those nine, three of those are new positions. And special services has worked to identify those critical need areas. We made sure that we have coverage there. We have some subs in place, so we are we are in a good and we'd love to be in a better spot, but we are in a good spot there. We'll be able to manage there. Food service, so we have lunch monitors who watch our lunchroom. Then we have food service workers who actually prepare and serve the meals. We have a shortage there. Our food service director, Mr. Armit, is preparing a plan on how to work with that. Part of one of the strategies that we're using is just eliminating the cash register, and that will help. That frees up another set of hands. So we believe that from the food service and the actual passing out of and making and preparing of the meals, we should be covered there. Are we do my two biggest concerns are lunch managers and sub teachers. So again, you know, I'm begging our community for those that you know, have that time and could be available, we'd love for you to apply. We would love for you to work with us and partner with us, even if it's for six months till the end of the school year, it would it would help be part of the solution for us.
Thank you, Dr. Blanchard. And I do have one follow up, and I don't know who this would be best for. So what will lunch look like for middle school and high school? Just in terms of assigned seating, number of kids at a table, those sort of logistical issues.
I'm going to have Paul. Is Paul Sibley? I don't see your I don't see your face right now, but I'm sure if you would if you would answer that question, please, because I know you've discussed this with principals and all that, so.
Yes, yeah. And Ms. Biden's good question. So we at our middle schools and high schools, we will have half of the number of students at our tables as we normally would. So they'll be spaced out. Also, so they're not sitting directly across from other students. So if it's rectangular tables, as you may know, our cafeteria's all have different kinds of tables. So we have round tables, we have rectangular tables. And so what we've done is spaced out our tables as best we can in all of our lunchrooms. And our kids will be sitting diagonally across from one another in situations where their tables are rectangular. We're also utilizing more space than we normally would. So we are expanding outside of lunchrooms in most of our schools where that's necessary. We're utilizing different hallways, utilizing community rooms or LGIs where we can. And so the spacing is going to, you know, as compared to a normal look, it is going to be spaced out. At the high schools and the middle schools, we have, you know, cameras in our lunchrooms, so we'll be able to monitor, you know, and contact trace should we need to. But in addition to that, we're going to be assigning seats for students, which at the secondary level is not something we typically do. But we will be in the pandemic. So kids will be assigned seats. Actually, they've gotten quite creative. I know that our high schools are using QR codes so that kids can come in. It makes it very easy for them to kind of scan in and know where those seats will be. And then they're going to kind of go around and make sure that kids stay in their assigned seats, also giving kids the opportunity to change seats, you know, or lobby to change seats when they want to, because as we know, it's still a social setting for kids, and we do want them you know, to have an opportunity to be social. But we also, you know, especially at the secondary level, are able to talk to the kids, you know, and talk to them about the fact that you know, we want to keep our schools open, and to do that, we need them to be responsible, you know. And I know the high schools, that's probably a little easier than at the middle schools perhaps. But we do have a lot of faith in our kids, and then obviously with our staff and administrators and the teachers who may be helping us, you know, the lunch monitors, whoever it may be, you know, to really keep encouraging kids to stay socially distanced, to follow all the protocols they can, to wear masks when they're not eating, and make sure that we we can keep them safe.
Thank you.
I didn't mention some of the other things, but we do have our our six foot stickers for all of our lines. And so kids will be, you know, when they're in line, making sure that they stay socially distanced as well.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Are there other questions at this time?
I have a question, Ron.
Sure.
What is what is the rationale between, excuse me, what is the rationale for cutting back ECSC and CLP to just the four days of in person learning?
Well, it really is. It's two reasons, Jill. Number one is it allows us to keep all of our staff on the same schedule, which we thought there are benefits to that. It also then allows our custodians to have a completely empty building to clean on the days on Fridays, which we thought having access to the building, doing a better job of cleaning was important. So really, for those two reasons.
So will all staff be working from home on Fridays then?
You know what? I don't I don't remember on that. I really, if someone else can answer that question, I don't remember the discussion.
So so part of part of the part of the order is when possible, when allowable, we should be allowing staff to work remotely. So if we don't have students in the building, just like right now, when we don't have students in the building, if staff can, if they have the technology, they have the capability for stability of the internet, then they can do so. And right now, we have, then I don't want to say a percentage, but there's a large percentage of staff that work remotely there, but there are staff that do come into the building. Now, as it relates to our support staff, a majority of our support staff, there are a couple of exceptions within there, but a majority of our support staff will be repurposed in the building on those days, and we're working with those associations because that that will allow that deeper level of cleaning to occur on those days. So we do have groups that you know, they won't, you know, that they'll be repurposed. For example, our bus drivers on Fridays would be repurposed, and they'd be in the buildings, and that's just one example. Food service workers, another example that lunch monitors, they would be in there doing a deep cleaning of their spaces as well.
Other questions?
Ron, I had a few things I wanted to ask. Probably Paul's the first one, Mr. Sibley. Information, obviously, elementary schools were already in hybrids, so our parents and community are kind of aware how they operate and how they grow. But how about for the secondary? Is there informations we've been sending home as far as what our plans are now? These kids are, if we pass this tonight, or what the file, what rules of the file as they come to school? We talked, I know you had orientation back in August, and we're showing our, it was October, we're showing the lines, the lanes in the hallway at Dakota, that kind of thing. So is there like an orientation for these kids as they come into school, or is it something you're passing through the internet email?
Yes, to both those questions, if the way you worded that, they are, the buildings are going to be communicating to families. They were prepared to do all of this before our last return, potentially in November. So each building has information that's going out to students and families about what it's going to look like when they come to school. They address everything from hallway traffic to passing time to where they enter, where they'll be exiting from. So all of those things will be communicated from each building, which is all communication that they had prepared, you know, back in November, ready for a return then. And it's all being, you know, it'll be updated so that it makes sense now. We did have originally a plan for sixth grade orientation that we were going to bring the sixth graders back one day early. In talking to the middle school principals, we have decided that we are not going to do that for a January return if we are returning. And what we're going to do instead is we're going to commit to the first two days of school. So the A kids and the B kids on their first day, the first day will be set up as more of an orientation for the kids. So information is going to go home from all the middle schools to the kids. They've actually created videos. Most of the principals have completed them at this point, which will show parents where kids are entering. And then they're going to have a plan to make sure sixth graders know how to get to their first hour class. And then their teachers will obviously not jump right into instruction on that first day, especially for the sixth graders, who will be new to the middle schools. And so they have had other orientation information shared with them at the end of last school year, earlier this school year. And before they return, there'll be more information going home, call them.
You're muted, Frank.
Talked about the vaccine a little bit with the board. You had shared some information you had gotten, talking with the health department. And I mean, a lot of people in the community, like myself, hear the news reports, you know, from media and so on, and talk about, you know, starting Monday, teachers can be vaccinated. I think there's a expectation in our community that, you know, our teachers being vaccinated right now. And that's not the case. I mean, I think we're still finishing our healthcare workers, right?
Right. Yeah, so so teachers, teachers are part of 1B on the priority list to receive vaccinations, and 1B was opened for vaccinations today. But the demand far outweighs the capacity to provide vaccinations. The county really has a very limited number of doses of the vaccine. So there's a video out there from Mark Hackle telling people to be really patient. And I think that's the key word in this because, you know, there's a number set up to call, which no one can get through. Because really, each 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 week, there's just a limited amount of vaccines to distribute. And at the current rate, it would take a very long time, and I'm not talking 30 days, I'm talking months to to get everyone vaccinated, even in group 1B. Today, with 1B coming on board, that was 175,000 people in Macomb County who qualify for which they might have one or 2,000 doses of the vaccine a week. So you can see, so the pressure is really on right now. Whoever puts pressure on whomever to get more doses of the vaccine to the counties. So Macomb County is prepared to give any many vaccines in a week. It's a matter of getting the doses in. So hopefully, all the powers that be can make this happen, and we can get our teachers vaccinated, the ones that wish to be.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
I guess first one, probably for Adam. Have we looked into for subs and volunteers and that? Have we looked into? One of the things I keep on hearing is I keep on hearing that subs, subs can't sub because they have to stay home with their children doing the virtual learning, which means we don't have enough subs because the subs can't come in. It's a big circle. Have we looked into maybe anybody that wants to volunteer or subs that want to come in, maybe bringing their children in? I can't see it being an overwhelmingly more amount or large amount of children coming into the school, and they can keep them off to the side or something. They could do their virtual schooling while the sub is basically helping us out.
So one of the things that are, one of the things that we have done is when when we don't have, when our when our classrooms are vacant, when we're doing at home learning, and again, this was prior to the last order in which we had to consider letting people work remotely. We did allow staff to have their school age child as long as they could. And there were some certain requirements to that and be in the in the in their room. Once we have students in the building, we don't want to add any more students into those classrooms. Again, you know, as Superintendent Roberts had indicated, we've worked diligently to really cut the number in half. And at the high school, it's not quite half for all the all the classes. So to add another student or two would potentially put us, you know, out of the out of a balance there and and not allow social spacing to occur. The other thing to consider would be that once we return to a hybrid, if we return to a hybrid, that that we would assume that the students would be in school at least at least two days a week. So if I was subbing in the district, and my kids were in the district, at least two days a week, I could sign up to sub, and that would help if if we had more subs. The issue really, it is a it is a statewide issue, and it's 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 beyond the pandemic. There's just a shortage of subs. It's magnified because of the pandemic, and with staff potentially having to quarantine and getting sick. You know, I will I will knock on whatever I need to knock on. Our staff has, even though they've had to quarantine for the most part, have not gotten to the point where we've had to have a shutdown of a building because we didn't have enough staff to cover it. It's been closed. It's been closed. We've been closed where we didn't, we thought we may have not, we didn't have enough staff to actually cover our classrooms. But we haven't had to do it yet. That is, or, um, that could be a reality that we face in the district. So to answer your, your question, people allowing, we, we allow students in the classroom. Um, at this point, our, our plan does not allow that. Um, and if we return to a hybrid, it would certainly allow those that had school-aged children at least two days to come into our uh, facility and sub, actually three, because they could do it on the all-remote day as well. And, and one of the other things we've done is we had, um, you know, we have increased our sub, um, for those long-term subs that we have out there, if they're willing to be a long-term, we have increased that rate of pay um, to be competitive with our, uh, neighboring districts. Um, but that, again, um, because that, because it's a sub shortage issue, it really hasn't solved the problem. Um, but we're, we're, we're trying to, trying to find anyone that can do it at this point.
I guess another question would be for Mr. Roberts. Uh, Mr. Roberts, why do we keep on looking at the positivity rate when we are constantly told that the rates that really matter are hospitalizations and death rates?
You know, and I, I think that we do, and as I've said many times, I'm certainly not a health official. Um, but those, those tend to be the rates that the, that our health department talks about. When, when we get together with, in our meetings. And I, and I think it, it's positivity rate, they say, just talks about, about community spread and relates to that. So, you know, that's the reason we use those numbers, is those the ones we, we, we tend to use when we're in our countywide meetings. I, I really, I, 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 with the county, um, we've not really talked about the hospitals. They, they talked in general about that, but they haven't really talked about that in relation to school operations. Maybe if it got to be such, they, the county would propose that we we, um, go remote due to the high level of hospital, hospitalizations and worried about community spread and what a school might contribute to that. But, um, they've not, they've not ever said anything to us about that. So so it's for that reason. Okay.
Okay, I, I have, I have one more question. Um, in the communications that we've gotten from parents on both sides of the issue, um, there has been a great deal of concern about choice. Um, so in terms of our virtual academy, i- it's my understanding that at this point, everyone's decision is set. If people had wanted to come out of the virtual academy at the semester, um, that's already happened. If people wanted to go into the virtual academy, that's happened as well. Is that accurate?
Yeah, you know what? I'm going to have, maybe Marina can start with that and talk about, um, Marina could talk about her elementary experience with with, with allowing people to change whatever decision they have and accommodating parents and their needs. Because I know Marina worked on that a lot, and then Paul might have some things to add for secondary. Because they're boots on the ground when it comes to, um, getting kids in the right place, so.
Of course. So with the CVVA, obviously, we placed many students in the CVVA right before the start of school. At the elementary level, we have thirty-eight sections, approximately six teachers at every grade level. Um, our lower L actually has a little more than six in some grade levels, but nonetheless, about thirty-eight sections of CVVA plus two additional sections for resource room or TC support. So that's a total of forty teachers and forty caselos or forty classrooms that are maxed out. Throughout the first semester, we did, I'm sorry, first trimester, we did accept requests for movement. And at the trimester mark, we reviewed and we made those movements, both in the CVVA, if there was room, and out. And we pretty much evened out right about the first week of December. We've had a few more requests since then, and those requests, we've told those families kindly that per our guidelines at the very beginning, at the third trimester mark, or in March, we will review those requests again and see if there's room. So currently at the elementary level, we added a hundred and eighty students to the CVVA. Um, of the two hundred and one requests, twenty-one, we have not been able to accommodate. And of the twenty-one, uh, fourteen are siblings. So sometimes we can't accommodate because we don't have room for one sibling, but we may have room for the other. So twenty-one at this time, that must hold.
And at the secondary level, Ms. Pyden, we have been working very hard. I can give a a very well-deserved, uh, shout out to the secondary school counselors, uh, the middle schools and high schools who have done an absolutely remarkable job in trying to create schedules for students who have requested both in and out of the CVVA. So since our last discussion with the board, we have been working very hard to grant as many of those requests as we have. Um, I, I'm floored and proud to report the work that our counselors have done. Out of the two hundred and twenty-five requests, uh, to change programming, we've actually granted about a hundred and eighty-five of them. So we are down to about forty families who unfortunately, at this time, we have not been able to move. Um, we've been doing this non-stop, uh, for a couple of months now. And so we are at a point where we are extremely tight, both in the CVVA sections we have and the face-to-face or remote sections that we're filling. And so we, we're going to try to move as many as we can uh, out of the ones that are left, but it is at a point now where it's extremely challenging. But as I mentioned, our counselors to move a hundred and eighty-five kids in and out, when you're talking about six sections, six classes per student, they, they have done an absolutely remarkable job.
Oh, I mean, absolutely. I can only imagine how, um, a large test that was. So thank you both for the hard work on that.
Absolutely. Okay, I just want to end with one comment. We say it, and this is true, safety is paramount. We have heard numerous times repeatedly from health experts that spread is not occurring within the schools. That is what I hear from my colleagues in other Macomb County districts who have been in. When we were in an elementary, there is only a couple of instances where there might be a possible link on spread. The vast majority, a, a very high percentage, you, you cannot point to spread at all. That was our experience. It, it is, what was happening in November when we closed down, it was, is people who were exposed to people outside of school. When people came to school unknowingly positive, it did not result in spread. And I really think it is because of our adherence to our protocols. Um, we have a good plan in place, it's ready to go. Um, it is safe. But like with everything in a pandemic world, sometimes things change quickly. And we always know that it, that there is a possibility that something could happen and we'd, we'd say we, we, we need to change what we're doing. So, um, but based on our experience before, where the numbers lie right now, the trend with what we currently know right now, um, this is our recommendation. We think it's good for kids. I really think it's good for teachers. I think it'll be energizing for our teaching staff. I, I know it'll be different to wear a mask and do that, but I've heard that from others who have gone in and, um, with, with their staffs to teach hybrid or whatever it is they're teaching, and they really, so they really found it to be energizing for everyone. So um, thank you for, uh, listening. And, um, Frank, Mr. Bednar, we are, we're good.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, thanks to your staff, uh, for the presentation this evening. All right, uh, we'll move on then to, uh, D, general consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
This is Jill, I'll move.
By Mr. Meeksack.
George, I'll support.
Put it by Mr. Sobal. Anything on the consent agenda, any of the board members would like to have removed or, uh, questions about, anything like that? Somebody talking from the board or is this?
Sorry, there was a little feedback on my end.
Okay. All right, so hearing none, um, we have a real call vote, Ms. Pyden.
Sure, Ms. Demingzak.
Yes.
Mr. Sobal.
Yes.
Dr. Andrea Ashco.
Yes.
Ms. Aquino.
Yes.
Mr. Bednar.
Yes.
Mr. Voitovich.
Sorry about that, yes.
And myself, yes. Eyes all emotion carries.
Excellent. Ms. Pyden, I believe we have, uh, three retirement resolutions this evening for employees that have retired.
We do, so we will be doing a joint resolution this evening. Whereas Denise Cross, Janice McDougall, and Rosemary Dickinson have served the Chippewa Valley School District faithfully and diligently for a period of thirty-three, thirty-three, and thirty-one years as clerical parapro, counselor and teacher respectively. Whereas Denise Cross, Janice McDougall, and Rosemary Dickinson, through their leadership, have had a positive impact on the staff, students, and the community. Whereas Denise Cross, Janice McDougall, and Rosemary Dickinson, conscientious, loyal, hardworking employees have elected to retire. And whereas Denise Cross, Janice McDougall, and Rosemary Dickinson will be missed by all their school colleagues. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District, not only on their behalf, but also that of the Superintendent of Schools and the Administration, extend their thanks and appreciation for a job well done, as well as best wishes for the future. Be it further resolved that this resolution, having been adopted by the Board of Education of the Chippewa Valley School District on the eleventh day of January twenty-twenty-one, be made a permanent part of the records of the school district and a copy sent to Denise Cross, Janice McDougall, and Rosemary Dickinson as an expression of our appreciation. And we wish them all well because collectively, they've given almost a hundred years of service to the Chippewa Valley family.
Absolutely. We thank them for their dedication and wish them all the best in their retirement. Okay, we're going to move on to item E from the community. Um, a couple of things. Uh, the board currently had passed a plan in November to reopen, as Mr. Roberts had explained, the elementary's on January twentieth and the secondary on January twenty-fifth, along respectfully with the, uh, special needs and English language and so on. Um, on the board's agenda tonight, towards the end of the meeting, will be a vote just to reaffirm that. Um, unless board members wanted to change those dates or something, uh, uh, right now, we are just set to reaffirm that. Uh, and we will have that vote following, uh, a lighter agenda item. So I just want to say that upfront, as far as where we're at. With that tonight, there was a little, little bit of confusion, like we're going to have some kind of vote, whether to return or go. Uh, the recommendation was made by administration to go to hybrid learning, um, and we will vote uh, to see that, uh, if it wants to change that later on in the meeting. Um, as far as from the community, I know we have a number of community members tonight that have signed up. I think I saw seventeen. Um, there's a few rules that we follow, uh, the board has for when the community addresses the board. Um, number one, it's, uh, not a question and answer period. It is, uh, a time for community members to come and and, and, and make, give their comments to the board regarding, uh, school issues. As far as the board, there's just a few guidelines we use. Um, first, I'm just going to read through them real quick. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to five minutes duration. So if you saw these meetings in the past, about four minutes in, I'll, I'll interrupt and give you a one-minute time to finish up. Um, participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. Complaints against identifiable school personnel may not be expressed in an open meeting. Such complaints should be first submitted in writing to the board and aired in open or closed session according to the wish of the persons involved. As the presiding officer, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irreverent. Uh, we may request any visitor to leave the meeting when that person does not observe reasonable decorum. Uh, we may call for a recess or adjournment to another time when the lack of public decorum so interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting as to warrant such action. And we, we may waive these rules with the approval of the board when necessary for protection of privacy of the administration of the board's business. So those are the rules, and we've read those every time, just so everybody's on the same page. And, and we've had, you know, uh, community comment for, from our community these past eight months or so. Um, and it's been very good. Very good, uh, very respectful, and people, uh, want to make their comments and, and we want to hear them. And a lot of all the emails we've got, so we welcome them. Um, but just, just remind folks, just remember, a five minutes will give you a, uh, one-minute warning. If, if I were to find that, uh, something wasn't going right with, uh, comments, then I would interrupt and work from there. So, but it's been very good. So, all right, with that, Ms. Monier White.
Thank you, Mr. Bednar. A reminder to our community members, when it is your turn to speak, a star six on your phone will unmute you. Our first speaker from the community, community tonight is Christopher Kloss.
Hello.
Hi, Mr. Kloss.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can hear you loud and clear, Mr. Kloss. Thank you for, uh, joining us this evening. Please, uh, please share your comments.
Sure. Uh, first, I'd like to thank the CBS board, um, for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I just want to say that I think now is the time. It's time to get our kids back in school. The governor and the director of the MDHHS have said so themselves just this past Friday. You said all along, you will follow the science, and the science is now there. We can't have any more excuses. It is hard not to think that we've always put the teachers or the peers first, never the children and their parents, as you claim. A lot of these teachers are out floating around on social media, posting all about everything that they're doing while we just sit back and watch. We've already pulled one child from the district and sent her to private school where she is thriving. Without the governor's three-week pause, she would have never missed a beat. And now after the holiday break, she is already back in class. The children need their structure and their parents need to be able to do their jobs, not the jobs of others. That is their responsibility. It's not that hard, and if you, and if it is too difficult, look in the community for leaders of corporations to help, corporations like mine that have not missed a beat. I beg of you to ask myself or the many of my peers who feel the same as I for the help you may need to make it happen, if you cannot make it happen yourselves. We're no longer able to do that job. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kloss, for your comments this evening. Um, okay, Ms. Monier White.
Our next speaker is John Leach.
Good evening. Uh, it is important to state that I'm not a teacher, nor am I married to a teacher in this district or any other. I know a majority of the parents this evening are going to give opinions on why they think students should be back to school with some form of face-to-face learning, or we mean virtual, and hoping that their comments will help persuade the board in making the decision one way or another. No matter what happens, we all know that there's no way to make every person happy. With that said, I'm also not oblivious as to how local, state, and federal politics work, and I'm not foolish enough to think that the board is not affected by those politics. The one thing I do know from my own past experience is that you never have a public vote at a public meeting if you do not already know what that outcome of that vote is going to be. I'm sure that most of this meeting is for show, and that there's already been a pre-meeting leading up to this board in which a vote was taken to determine what learning model will look like moving forward. In addition, a potential learning model going forward was posted on the district website as of January fourth. I'm also going to assume that there is already an email crafted that will be sent out shortly after this meeting that will outline what those plans will be. As a parent of a child that's been in this district for the entire K-12 experience, I first want to say that the teachers have been wonderful. Like every student, there were some she liked more than others, but I see the influence that each one of them have had on her, and I'm grateful for all of them, especially over the last ten months of virtual learning. I would mention each teacher, counselor, or principal by name, but I only have five minutes, which now is probably four. On the other hand, there are a number of things I've noticed as a parent and businessperson that I think should be mentioned regarding the lack of support from the administration and the boards, both previous and current. My comments are mine and mine alone, and based on research I have done going through the district. My comments are mine and mine alone, and based on research I have done going through the district website, calling other districts in Macomb and Oakland County, as well as conversations with other parents. First, I believe the board slash administration has not been transparent enough when it comes to the COVID situation and face-to-face learning. Most have allowed parents and students to believe the reason that kids cannot go, cannot be in school, with the exception of Governor Whitmer's orders to close schools, is due to COVID. If COVID was such an issue, and you say, are you looking at the data? Why are other districts in Macomb County able to go back face-to-face, some attending all day and some hybrid? Was any of the data, data used broken down by age groups or just total cases? As of late November, early December, even Dr. Fauci has said kids should be in school, and most recently, Governor Whitmer stating that all kids should be back in school with some type of face-to-face learning by March first. I will state that some of my next comments were finally addressed and expounded on by Mr. Blanchard this evening, but still want to bring them to your attention.
Sir, you, you, you just can't use identifiable names, so you can say the Assistant Superintendent, but we're, part of the rules, which we don't.
Okay.
Specifically, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay, I believe one of the real reasons kids have not been face-to-face is due to the lack of support personnel in the schools. I'm talking about substitute teachers, custodians, clerical staff, lunchroom staff, bus drivers, et cetera, as well as pressure from the Executive Board of the Teachers Union. It does not take a rocket scientist to figure out there's been a shortage of teachers and subs over the last five to ten years. So if there is a high number of teachers that are out on a particular day, there likely is not enough subs to fill their spots. Why is that? Because our district is one of the lowest-paying districts for subs. At the same time, from what I've been able to research, Lance Cruz pays the most for subs in Macomb County, and that may be part of the reason why they've been face-to-face all year, they can get subs to fill in classrooms. I understand the sub process, and I know the process has been contracted out to Ed You Serve for a while now. I also know that ultimately, the district has to pay Ed You Serve, whether it's a yearly contract or portion of the subs daily pay, but one way or another, Ed You Serve gets paid. This systems mean there's less money to pay the subs. It's ridiculous to think that a high school student or an adult working at McDonald's can be making just as much money as a substitute teacher in our district.
I'm sorry.
My daughter's told me a number of times how so-and-so teacher had to.
I'm sorry, Mr. Leach, again, I'm sorry to interrupt you again, I just want to give you a one-minute warning. Please continue.
One, I could go on with other support positions, my time's limited, but I believe these are some of the reasons kids aren't in school. The bottom line is, we as a district do not pay our support staff and subs and personnel enough money. Looking at the district website, looking at audited financials, I've seen step programs that allow pay scales that only range from a thirty to seventy percent pay increase for these individuals over an eight-year period, might mean five dollars. In addition, the fact that our students do not all have computers to use on a regular basis is is quite, quite outstanding when you think Utica, that has twenty-six thousand students, had each student given a computer. I look at kids at IA that get a computer in ninth grade, and they continue to use that computer through twelfth grade and turn it in. There's no reason why our kids shouldn't be in that same position, which would make the teaching for the teachers much easier. Our teachers are asked right now to be IT professionals, create two curriculums, one for face-to-face, one for hybrid, as well as other cleaning, custodial duties, et cetera. With the last couple of seconds, I also like to say that there's been nothing done to recognize the seniors this year. Um, it seems like last year that the board and administration did everything they could to try to make sure there were seniors recognized over the last couple of months, whereas this year, they have not had any type of recognition whatsoever. Kids have been out of school since March twenty-nineteen, no junior proms, no senior section at football games, no homecoming, shortened sports seasons, no sports seasons, no clubs, no college visits, I could go on. Let's recognize the accomplishments of these kids, whether someone's received some type of art music award, gets accepted into a college, wins a scholarship, gets recognition on a PSAT.
Okay.
I've not heard or read about any of these accomplishments.
Mr. Leach, the, uh, the time has expired, uh, if you wanted to just give a closing sentence or two, that'd be fine.
You got it, thank you for your time. The bottom line is that the final months for many of these kids in the district needs to do more and not use COVID as an excuse. For those that say, what about my kids, I appreciate that and feel for them also. However, they will still have the possibility of having a somewhat normal senior year experience as they continue through school, but for the current seniors, this is it, and they've lost so much already.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your comments this evening, Mr. Leach, okay, I will be on, Ms. Monier White.
Ashley Griffiths is our next speaker.
Ms. Griffiths.
Oh, can, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear, Ms. Griffiths, please, uh, share your comments with the board.
Okay, good evening, everybody, I want to first say thank you to the teachers. They have been amazing during this whole thing, I, I'm working from home, I'm able to see on my big screen, because I connect my MacBook to my TV, so that my daughter can see a huge screen when she's doing school, and I can look over and see what she's doing, and I can see all, what all the other little kids are doing, and what these poor teachers have to do, deal with every day is mind-blowing. Um, let me just say that when the decision to go back virtually happened, I was so disappointed in the board and Mr. Roberts that there aren't even words. There was no massive breakout in the school, and I understand there's a lack of subs, but as you said, there was a lack of subs before this. So the fact that there was no massive breakout, why couldn't these kids have stayed on until Christmas? My daughter would have had, I believe, ten, eleven days of school because she is, um, the B schedule, which she has missed quite a bit of school because it always ended up on B days of no school, or half-days, or whatever it would be, but I have other things to talk about, so I'll move on. My daughter, who loved going to school, now hates going to school. Mr. Roberts, you said that you visited, um.
Ms. Griffiths, part of the guidelines are that you just refer to Mr. Roberts as the superintendent, appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem, well, okay. He was able to visit somebody's home and said that it was a fabulous setup, which I wish I could have. Unfortunately, I do not, again, I work from home, my daughter's down here in the basement with me, we've got it set up on the TV, but seeing her day-to-day stating how much she hates going to school, it's heartbreaking. If you want to see what it normally looks like and not the amazing few cases that are out there, come to my house. I took videos last week of what she was like, you want to see it? I'll send it to you, because that's reality, not the few cases where they have fabulous little setups in their homes and both um, parents are able to sit there and help and everything, I do it alone. My husband has to be at work, I have to work, I'm working fifty, sixty hours a week and helping teach first grade. Sorry, that's not okay with me. As for, let's see what else on there was. Um, my other question is, it was stated that possibly going back to face-to-face, and it was said later on this year. Now, was later on this year meaning this school year or later on in twenty-twenty-one? I will tell you right now, I have a tour with Emmanuel tomorrow, and I pray that I get in, because if you're referring to later in the year of twenty-twenty-one, that's absolutely ridiculous, I'm sorry, it is. Let's see, and as being, um, for short on Lunch Aid or anything like that, I am more than willing to give up my lunch hour and go to the school and help in any department that is needed, I don't want to be paid at all, I don't want to take away from the money that could be put towards substitutes, when I'm more than willing to do anything in my power to get my daughter back in school, whether it be hybrid or full-time face-to-face, that's all I have to say, and I really, and I know the decision's kind of already been made that, yes, we're supposed to go back because it was just dates, and hopefully you guys don't push the dates out, because again, if the dates get pushed out, I wish that somebody would come to my home and see what it's like day-to-day, and not, like I said, the few cases where everything is perfect, because I'm telling you, it's not, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffiths, for your comments this evening, um, okay, Ms. Monier White.
Our next speaker is Christine Hilton.
Hello, Mrs. Hilton. Hello, Mrs. Hilton.
She is in the call, if you could just use a star six to unmute.
Okay. How's that now?
Mrs. Hilton.
Yes, yes, can you hear me now, sorry?
We can hear you loud and clear, please, please share your comments with the board.
Okay, thank you so much, um, yeah, so I am calling and speaking as a parent of a fifth grader in elementary and a senior in high school, I'm also calling as a healthcare professional. Um, firstly, I want to commend my children's teachers um, for doing their very best in a constantly changing situation. I know it's really difficult for the teachers, and everything they're doing to keep my children as engaged as they can in less-than-ideal circumstances is just so appreciated. Um, the problems that I want to discuss are that I do not feel remote learning is suited for all learning types, all learning styles. Um, for instance, my senior in high school, she's able to take the initiative, complete assignments, I'm not really concerned about her in remote learning. I do feel like she's missing out on a senior year, um, traditional senior year in that fad, um, but she'll do okay. Um, there is a concern about her being ready for AP exams. She will not, she says she does not think she'll be ready, and I feel that that money paid for that exam was wasted, uh, but it is what it is uh, with the type of instruction she's getting. My fifth grader, however, has different, a different learning style and learning needs, remote is not suited for him, he desperately needs, as do many students, uh, face-to-face education. He will not speak up in a remote environment when he doesn't understand something. Um, I have finally got him secured with a tutor, which has helped some and and do have to pay out-of-pocket for that. Um, we've paid out-of-pocket for equipment that we've purchased, it's, it's very frustrating. Um, but I know my story is not unique, um, I wish that, you know, I, I do work as a healthcare employee, I wish that I could be home with him to guide him through his assignments, but I cannot, um, because I have to work outside of the home. Um, I do feel that, I know, I know that the decision is going to be made for face-to-face for elementary, but I feel face-to-face is essential for all levels of education to some degree, whether it's hybrid, full-time, face-to-face. Um, I think it can be done safely, I've been working in healthcare with PPE. We're doing it safely, uh, I believe in PPE and hy, hand hygiene to prevent the spread. I just feel that we have to start living, we have to provide a quality education to our students, to every student. Every student is different, and we are not doing our best to meet the needs of all of those students. Face-to-face, you know, I mean, or remote is not for everyone. Um, some households may have situations where they are at a greater health risk for this pandemic, and therefore, they should have the choice for a virtual option, even if they did not initially opt in it, but not all households are at risk. Um, you know, again, we, we have to start living. My other concern as a mental health provider is the social isolation that these children are enduring in a remote environment. Um, it was just quoted in my, in a large meeting I was at yesterday in my healthcare organization by the chief of psychiatry, that the suicide rate has increased over the last year due to this pandemic, and you know, that is in part due to the social isolation that we are facing as a society and our students in this remote environment, uh, neighboring environments are doing it, neighboring districts, I mean, Lance Cruz, Warren Woods, just to name a few, I know the sizes are different, but they're figuring it out. Are we consulting with these districts to learn how they're doing it successfully, how they're handling the substitute shortage?
I'm sorry.
The other question I have, yeah, one minute?
I'm sorry, yeah, one minute, please continue.
Got it, uh, one possibility I thought of is what happened to student teachers, is there any way that they could help out? Um, just a thought, I, I don't work in education, I'm in healthcare, but just a thought I had. Um, again, thank, thank you to all the educators for how hard you're working. I do hope that the board makes the right decision and does it for all levels of education and way before March first, which was recommended by our governor, um, our children desperately need it, they are missing out, and they are in social isolation, and it's putting their mental health at risk. Um, and I'm, I'm sad when I talk to other districts that are doing face-to-face, and I have to talk about our remote situation and my children's situation, thank you so much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Hilton, for your comments this evening to the board, and thank you for your services as a healthcare provider on our front lines out there. Okay, Ms. Monier White.
Melissa Rice is our next speaker from the community, community tonight.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear, Ms. Rice, please, I'll share your comments with the board.
Well, my first comment to the board is that I find it very disrespectful that I'm on the team's meeting watching, along with listening through my phone, and I see a board member dozing off during the meeting, which tells me that the board meeting is not that important to that member. Second, I want to say, the governor did make it clear the other day that the kids could go back to school. These children need to be in school full-time. Two years ago, I moved from Warren Woods School District out to Macomb, tripled my mortgage payment, so that my children could go to a better school district. I have a fifth grader that has a reading and writing disability and a speech disability, and I have a kindergartner that is following in the same path. The children need to be in school full-time, the governor made it clear the other day that the children are not the spreaders of COVID. The kids need to be in the school, otherwise I have to pull my children out of the school district. During the summer, it was a decision that we were debating on making, as my family members who are in the same household, both worked the frontline during the major part of the pandemic when it first was out, and they as well pulled their children from Chippewa Valley School District because they could not do the online schooling. You cannot put a kindergartner in front of a computer for that long of a day. I have had an instance with my kindergartner where the teacher had the day off, and there was no substitute for them for the day. They checked in with someone in the morning and was given hours of schoolwork to do with their grown-up. My husband and I both worked so that we could afford to live out here and go to Chippewa Valley Schools because they were supposed to be so good. I have my mother here that watches my children, and Grandma's not a babysitter, she's a grandma, and she's not a teacher. Grandma no longer takes the children on the weekends, which she loves to do, and the children love to do. They are now missing out on that because Chippewa Valley will not put those kids in school full-time. The school district we moved from had only a three-week pause when the governor shut down the high schools. My kids could have been in school full-time, this whole time, if I didn't decide to move to Chippewa Valley Schools. The kids also, there's no social, socialization with the kids and friends. My son, all he does is sit on the tablet all day after school and talks to his friends, there's no social interaction. There's no exercise for these children. My kindergartner, this should have been an amazing year for them, for all the kindergartners. It's a big milestone in their life and in their future, and right now, with this hybrid and with the online schooling, my kids didn't take a step forward, they took five steps back. My fifth grader, who should be working on a, who was a third-grade reading, reading level when he left fourth grade, is now in fifth grade with a second-grade reading level, because he's not getting the help and the assistance that he needs. I don't think there's any reason why these children cannot be in school full-time. I can, and for the superintendent, you want to visit a house? I invite you any day during online schooling to come to my house and see how a kindergartner learns. My children are off the computer at one-thirty, two o'clock with a load of work to do, after they stand on a computer all day in front of a screen.
I'm sorry, Ms. Rice, just wanted to. I'm sorry, Ms. Rice, just one minute warning, please, please continue. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No problem. If any of you have a kindergartner, you guys know they don't sit in their desk. My daughter hasn't learned a thing this year, and I blame it on the board for not allowing these children to be in school. I am 100% for on, for in-person school 100% of the time. And if we're going to do online learning on Fridays, I don't see why we can't put a camera in the teacher's room, and the parents that don't want to send their kids, they can learn at home still. The parents that want to send their kids, let them send them full-time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rice, for your comments with the board this evening. Okay, Ms. Monier White?
Our next speaker is Jask R.
Hello, Jask?
Hello. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm a student at one of the high schools in the district. Making us come back would be one of the most, uh, most biggest mistakes this district can make. Most students come into frequent contact with high-risk individuals, some who may live with them. This includes vulnerable parents and elderly in the same household, especially in younger children who have a tendency not to wear their masks probably. The district cannot ensure that all students will be protected with PPE. Classrooms do not have the capabilities to effectively social distance between students at all times, especially during lunch when students must take them off to eat. The district says that they will social distance whenever possible, but why take that risk of possibility when students can stay home, continue a modified style of education, and effectively social distance? Little Turtle Preschool had two cases between students. That's a small preschool with small class sizes, and this information is from the middle of December. Agreed that there must be more free, um, information come out, but this is just one of a very large sample size of information. Me and many of my peers care about our safety and feel that opening schools will be jeopardizing our health. I know some of my own teachers that have expressed disinterest in returning to school due to them being elderly, high-risk, vulnerable, or someone in their family is high-risk. If we close the schools because of a thousand cases in March, should we open them back up with the amount of cases we have now? Masks are not guaranteed protection. We should be adapting to COVID. I agree. But we need to combat it before assimilating. The vaccine is not out to the general public yet, and we have no protection in our immune system or any idea what the long-term effects of the vaccine, of the virus is. Parents that want kids to go back, I want you to think of this. You have provided childcare for this long into the school year. You can do it for half a year or more. Forget about the gatherings that you're missing because of your kids and think about the bigger picture. If you don't believe me, we have Google, we have the CDC, we have the news, and so many more sources. Pick your poison. COVID is still here. So I ask the board here today, listen to the evidence. Do not risk our health for a handful of vocal parents' ulterior need for childcare. Do not open schools, or at least wait for the governor's suggested date of March 1st to reconsider opening schools. Our health is in your hands. Please listen to the students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jask, for your comments this evening. All right, Ms. Monier White?
Uh, our next speaker is Tanzila K.
Hello, Tanzila. Hello, Tanzila. Hello, Tanzila. Hello, Ms.
Sorry, hi. Um, I just wanted to agree with Jask and say that I want to, I want to say that we should not go back because people are vulnerable and have elderly family members who are as well. If one comes into contact with the, with the virus, they're endangering their family. Um, usually you would know if you have the virus. However, there are also, there are asymptomatic people. Um, also, you can permanently lose your smell and taste, even worse your life. Um, it's not smart to go back, especially with the curve flattening a little bit, although it is, some progression is not a lot. See, we've had these issues for over a year. We have these issues for like over a year due to Michigan opening up and closing, re-closing. If we closed once and for all for at least two to three months, it would have been fine and it would have been gone. Isn't it ironic that the virus started in China, but China's almost fully recovered and doing great other than the Muslim genocide and Uyghur, in which you guys should learn more about and spread awareness on because it's wrong? Just because you say you'll keep safe, safety measures with the six feet, social distancing, you won't. I'm a school choice kid of Chippewa Valley Schools, and my home high school district opened up recently, and I see the kids, kids posting blogs of them hugging their friends, taking selfies, like really close together. And in many of the blogs, they take their masks off as well because it's limiting in some way. Although masks are annoying, think about the healthcare workers. They keep their masks on not once, but all day. I mean, not for like one hour or two hours, but like all day. They don't, they don't keep one on, they keep two on, and they have to like stack up and like, yeah. Um, it's, it's selfish and careless to go back because forcing everything to open is going to pressure like the hospitals and the healthcare workers and stuff, especially with the virus spreading even faster. Addition, and like, that's going to get worse with the mutation of the virus and stuff. Um, my sister is a healthcare worker, and she comes home complaining about the amount of COVID patients, and the hospitals are packed and people are dying because everyone's crazy to open up and just see their friends and family and stuff. And it's not fair. And yeah, Zoom calls may be annoying, but they're safer. Instead of Zoom, why don't we just have videos posted, but like only called during like exams and tests and not cheating if needed? Um, amongst this pandemic, we don't need to worry about looking good for school with the Zoom calls because some days we don't feel our best and we are forced to keep our cameras on. But we also can't skip school, making online school better and efficient because we don't have to skip a day just because we're insecure. Due to the forceful opening up of work, of workplaces and like just opening up this thing and everything, my father had to go back and because he can't do his job online, really is scared that one day he'll come home with COVID. Um, due to this, due to his fear of spreading COVID to me and my family, I haven't hugged my father since like October. Um, stop rushing everything because we're not ready to go back. We're mentally not ready, and we're physically not ready either. No one is, I don't think anyone's ready to go back, even though school is annoy, online school is annoying and it's scary and pressuring and just like hard to understand. It's not, it's, real, in-person school is not the better option. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tanzila, for your comments this evening. All right, Ms. Monier White?
Uh, the next speaker is Kristen Carr.
Hello?
Hello, Kristen. We can hear you loud and clear. Please share your comments with the board.
Hi, as a parent of a student in the CLP program and another student who's in middle school, I support going back to school face-to-face five days a week. It is rather disappointing to hear other parents from the community suggest that a parent needs childcare, and that's why we want our, our students to attend school face-to-face. What parent brings a child in the world and would act careless and not make the right decisions on their behalf? My son desperately needs teachers who are trained to teach them five days a week. Face-to, computer work is not working, learning half of what he normally would if he was face-to-face. My other son, yeah, he's, he's doing okay, but what about the psychological effects that computer work is having on all of these students? I'd encourage you to reach in, allow these students to attend face-to-face five days a week, especially the students in the CLP program. They're already academically and socially behind and desperately need trained teachers to teach them instruction five days a week. You've answered many of the questions that I had, which was one of the reasons why I signed up. I just hope that we will do something to encourage more substitute teachers to fill in the gaps so that all the students can return, and there will be no excuses that we don't have teachers to teach these classes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carr, for your comments this evening. Okay, Ms. Monier White?
The final speaker we have on the call tonight is Sharon Wilson.
Hello, Ms. Wilson?
Hello, can you hear me?
You can hear you loud and clear. Thanks for coming to the meeting. Please share your comments with the board.
Hello, my name is Sharon Wilson. Um, I have several ties to Chippewa Valley High School. My husband is a teacher and coaches three sports. My son is a senior and brings three sports, and I am a substitute teacher and secretary of athletic boosters. Um, first, I would like to thank the board and school administrators for all the hard work they have put in. I want to apologize for the personal attacks on your character and questioning of the reasoning behind your decisions that I see online every day. Um, that is not who we are. Although I might not agree with your solution to this pandemic, or I might envision a different path to get our students back to school, I know in my heart that your hearts are in the right place. Chippewa Valley Athletics is always good for characters, and I hope my parent peers can stand by this also in the hours to come on social media. Debate is always healthy, but attacks and hate is not the solution. Um, okay, my concern, vaccinations. Um, I would like to suggest the school board get involved with procuring enough vaccinations for the school staff. As now, um, as we've talked about earlier, it is impossible to get through to the Macomb County Health Department. I know you're asking us to be patient, but I would feel much more comfortable coming back to substitute knowing that I've had the vaccination. Um, perhaps if the board could get some type of plan that the whole school would, the district would get vaccinated within like the three, three weeks or something where you guys made appointments for all the teacher staff who wanted it, and we weren't trying to all call in at the same time. As far as the sub shortage, shortage, it's also been spoken about, that you can work at pretty much any other job without the risk of all-day COVID exposure and get paid more. Um, I'm pretty sure that's a deterrent for many. Uh, I will be there every day that my son comes in, but I do it for the love of the kids and not for the money. I would also like to say to the commenter who said that the teachers have all this free time and you're choosing them over the students. I strongly disagree with that.
Wilson, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we need to speak about things that are important to the district and board, and we're not allowed to address other comments made on this board by their parents.
Okay, so I will rephrase that.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I will. As a wife of a very dedicated teacher, I can assure you, he is putting in more time than ever before and not flaunting his free time, which is pretty much nonexistent. Um, with having to prepare for two different types of teaching right now because he teaches both in the CBEA or what is the VDVVA and the traditional classroom, and giving up his six-hour prep now, um, I don't see my husband. Again, um, I would like to, uh, thank you guys for your time, and I encourage, well, now I guess I'm the last speaker, so we can get on with this and watch the game. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson, for your comments this evening. Um, Ms. Monier White, is there any other parents or community members that might have, we missed, that came on the call since that would like to speak to the board?
We do not have anyone else on the call tonight.
Okay. All right, um, so I want to thank the parents again and the community members for being respectful and trying to, um, make this, uh, help us out with our decisions, help us out as we go about as administrators and board members, uh, and they're very vital. So we appreciate you taking your time out this evening to spend and give us those comments. All right, we're going to move on then to, uh, F, old business, there is none this evening. Move to G, new business. G1, approve custodial supply contract. Mr. Sutherland?
Uh, recommended motions that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve Allied Eagle Supply Company for a one-year contract to purchase custodial supplies district-wide in the approximate annual amount of $160,000 with the option of six annual contract extensions.
Can we have a motion?
This is Jill, I'll move.
Move by Mr. Big Zach.
I'll support that motion.
Ms. Quino, rationale, please.
Aggressive pricing was obtained through the public bidding process, ITV 19 dot 2021. Their proposals were reviewed and approved by the custodial and purchasing offices. Funding will come from the general fund for this purchase.
Questions or comments by the board?
I, I have one. Mr. Sutherland, have we used this vendor before to procure custodial products?
We have used them, not to this extent, but we have used them before, yes.
And is the reason that we are using them, um, to an increased extent because we need to buy additional supplies to combat the COVID-19 virus?
Uh, no, this is something that we typically do on a regular basis. You can see through this, uh, motion that we're looking at a one-year approval with the option to kick it out six more years on an annual basis. As long, as long as they perform their function and, and we can receive our supplies and, uh, and obviously can keep our pricing as stagnant as possible, then we'll continue the relationship with them. So a lot of this all depends on, uh, their performance more than anything else over the next year.
Great, thank you.
Other comments, questions by the board? Hearing none. Ms. Piden, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Domenick Zach?
Yes.
Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Dr. Andrea Ashko?
Yes.
Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Mr. Sobah?
Yes.
Mr. Voitovich?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Eyes all, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, move on to G3, approve school bus purchase. Mr. Sutherland?
I think, Frank, I believe we need to go to G2 first.
Sorry, I was skipping over my papers. My mistake. Yeah, G2, approve MSBO bus purchasing program.
The recommended motions that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the attached resolution to adopt the 2020-2021 MSBO bus purchasing program and that the reading of the resolution be waived.
Move by Ms. Quino?
Our charge.
Move by Mr. Sobah, rationale, please.
By adopting this resolution, the Board of Education indicates its intent to participate in the MSBO purchasing program. School boards are required to approve the resolution to purchase buses from the statewide bid.
Questions or comments by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote, Ms. Piden, please.
Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Mr. Sobah?
Yes.
Dr. Andrea Ashko?
Yes.
Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Ms. Domenick Zach?
Yes.
Mr. Voitovich?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Eyes all, motion carries.
Okay, very good. We'll be on to G3, approve school bus purchase. Mr. Sutherland?
Recommended motions that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education approve the purchase of 12 school buses from Hoaxster Transportation Incorporated as follows. 10 2022 Thomas Safety Liner C277 Passenger School Buses with two rows of integrated child restraint seats at, at $97,433 each, and two 2022 Thomas Safety Liner C265 Passenger Buses with integrated child restraint seats and front wheelchair lift at $101,784. The total for this purchase will be $1,177,898.
Motion?
So moved.
By Ms. Piden?
I support.
Court by Ms. Andrea Ashko. Dr. Andrea Ashko, rationale, please.
The Director of People Transportation has compared the specifications of the offerings for each of the three manufacturers represented in the purchasing program and has made the determination that the recommended bus model will best serve the district at this point based on the performance of our last purchases and other competitive factors. Funding will come from the 2018 bond fund for this purchase.
Questions, comments by the board?
I have a question. Bednar, um, these are replacement buses for older buses, or is there another rationale for the purchase?
So, uh, yes to both. Uh, they are older buses. Uh, they're replacement for older buses. Um, if you can, if you recall, uh, about a year ago, we were approved for a, a grant, a Volkswagen grant, that was funded through, um, the fuel transformation, uh, programs. I forget what the, everything was called. And what it is, is, uh, these are older buses that have higher emissions than what, is, I guess, appropriate to what is out there now. And with this grant, um, by, by taking out the older buses and disposing of them, uh, they will pay for with this grant 25% of the cost of any new bus. So the buses that we're replacing, I believe, are 11 years old. And with the grant, 25% of the cost of these is going to be reimbursed to the district. So, uh, from our vantage point, typically, our buses, depending on mileage, usually last between 10 and 12 years. And so, uh, you know, for this, it was almost a no-brainer for us to do that. I believe 25 of our buses qualified for this. I believe twenty-five of our buses qualified for this. Uh, we did, I think thirteen of them last, no, we did ten of, eleven of them last year, twelve of them this year, and then we'll do the remaining two next year, uh, to fulfill the grant requirements.
Okay, thank you.
There comes questions by the board. Hey, hearing none, Ms. Piden, roll call vote please.
Myself, yes. Dr. Andrea Ashko.
Yes.
Ms. Aquino.
Yes.
Mr. Bednar.
Yes.
Ms. Dominguez.
Yes.
Mr. Sobah.
Yes.
Mr. Voitovich.
Yes.
Eyes all, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving to G4, approve twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one appropriation act for general and special revenue funds, Mr. Sutherland.
The recommended motions that the following resolution be adopted by the Board of Education to approve the general fund, food service fund, community service, childcare fund, McComb International Academy Fund, and the student school activity fund budgets for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one fiscal year and further request that the reading of the resolution be waived.
Motion?
I'll move, it's Jill.
I'll support, it's George.
Dominguez, I'm sorry, Jill, um, and supported by Mr. Sobah. Okay, and is there a rationale, Mr. Sutherland?
Yes, uh, the administration has reviewed the entire general fund budget and, I'm sorry, the entire budget and updated the budgets for the general fund, food service fund, community service childcare fund, International Academy of McComb, and the student school activity fund, reflecting the most current information. Adjustments are often needed to be in compliance with the Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, which governs the budget process and prohibits deviations exceeding adopted appropriations. Changes having the greatest impact on the general fund are further detailed in the following summaries. Projected revenue for the general fund increased by just over sixteen million dollars from a hundred and sixty-two point eight million to a hundred and seventy-eight point nine million dollars. Uh, the increase in revenue is a result of the following updates. Our per pupil, uh, foundation restoration of six hundred and fifty dollars per pupil generated an additional, uh, nine point six million dollars. The net increase due to the super blend pupil funding formula with seventy-two point four FTEs higher than the original budget generated just under six hundred thousand dollars. The one-time funding increase of sixty-five dollars per pupil generated a million dollars of additional revenue. Uh, reduction in fee for service revenues due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So we had to reduce many of those fees by one point nine million dollars in revenues. The increase in revenues due to various new CARES Act grant sources and carryovers that generated an additional six point six million dollars and then review and adjustment of other revenue sources as necessary. Total revenues increased by nine point eight percent from the original budget adopted in June two thousand twenty. Projected expenditures for the general fund increased just under twelve point seven million dollars from a hundred and sixty-six point one million to a hundred and seventy-eight point eight million. Significant changes from the original budget resulted from net cost increases due to the impact of negotiated labor agreement contracts for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one leaves and staffing changes that increased our costs by three point six million dollars. Associated increased costs adjustments to retirement and FICA of one point eight million dollars. Um, increased costs largely associated with the CARES Act grant spending, which includes the one-to-one student laptop and PPE expenditures. That was an additional six point six million dollars. The impact of health insurance rates and increased hard cap limit under PA one fifty-two for health insurance benefits and cash into a health benefits decreased about four hundred thousand dollars and transfers to the special revenue funds with a net cost of about one point two million dollars with the review and adjustments of other expenditure items as appropriate. Total expenditures increased seven point six million dollars from the original budget adopted in June two thousand twenty. The changes identified produced a projected revenue greater than expenditure of just under ninety-four thousand in the first amended budget. The original budget estimated expenditures exceeding revenues by three point three million dollars. The budget modifications present, presented above result in a projected June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one uh, ending fund balance of thirty point one million dollars or roughly six point eight percent of the budgeted expenditures.
Okay, any, uh, questions, comments by the board? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote, Ms. Piden, please.
Ms. Dominguez.
Yes.
Mr. Sobah.
Yes.
Dr. Andrea Ashko.
Yes.
Ms. Aquino.
Yes.
Mr. Bednar.
Yes.
Mr. Voitovich.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Eyes all, motion carries.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Sutherland, in your office for the hard work you put in, uh, to bring us to this point, this budget where we were putting some of the fund equity when we faced a over three million dollar shortage going in. So thank you very much for your hard work. Please pass it on to your staff also. Okay, on behalf of the board, we'll move on to, uh, G5, reconfirm the extended COVID nineteen learning plan, Mr. Roberts. Ron, you're all muted.
Yeah, I hate that. Um, recommended motion that the Chippewa Valley Schools Board of Education reconfirm the extended COVID nineteen learning plan for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year.
Motion please.
I'll move, it's Jill.
This is Denise, I'll support it.
You know, rationale please.
Rationale, this is a requirement of Public Act one forty-nine, it must be done on a monthly basis.
Okay, so this is that portion of the meeting that I spoke to earlier. Our plan was, when we have, when we put the plan together back in November, was to start elementary January twentieth and secondary January twenty-fifth. Uh, we're just reaffirming that plan, um, in case there are any other comments by the board regarding this.
Yeah, Mr. Bednar.
Yes.
I'd like to put something forward to say that we should, uh, every meeting, we should address this and maybe even try and look at getting face-to-face sooner.
Okay. Other comments on board?
Mr. Bednar.
Yes.
I have a comment, I'm, um, a parent in the district and I face the same frustrations and trials and tribulations that our parents have spoken to here tonight. There's been a lot of tears here shed in my household. However, I don't think it's the right time to return to in-person yet, especially when we're on the cusp of having our community or at least our staff be vaccinated. Also have a lot of concerns about what we're going to do about staffing, as Dr. Blanchard talked about earlier, when we have staff that are out either due to COVID or quarantining and how it's going to work.
Thank you, yeah, we will, so what would happen is if, if we did not have support for this plan, if we had a majority of the board voted against it, then we, uh, we could, as a board, uh, amend the agenda and, and add a new, uh, date in. So it'll depend on the vote here, if we get a majority of the board, board to vote to, uh, go with the current plan, as Mr. Roberts told us this evening, then that would pass, but if we have a majority of the board that does not want to move forward with the plan as laid out this evening, then, uh, we could not pass it, amend the agenda and add, uh, another, um, however the motion would read, so just so everybody's clear on that. Okay, thank you. Any other comments by the board?
Um, this is Denise, I just, um, wanted to say that, um, I, you know, I, this has been a, a very difficult year for all of us and I do, my heart's do, does go out to the parents and the struggles and the students and their isolation. Um, I think this is a good first step and I hope that we can, as people become vaccinated and, um, hopefully, our staff stays healthy, that we might be able to return to full-time, you know, sometime in the next few months, so that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, actually, um, I wasn't gonna read this, if I could just read a quick statement here, um. From what I'm seeing, I also am a parent in the district, uh, from what I'm seeing, we're looking at the number of positive cases when we're continually told from doctors throughout the country to look at the hospitalizations and the death rate, okay? The positive, uh, cases are, are something to be, to be debated, um, we are testing more, that's one of the reasons they're a little higher. Also, there, people don't realize that a lot of people, if they're going through a certain situation, they can get tested up to three, maybe four times a week, which each test is considered an individual test. That's one of the reasons that they're a lot higher. Um, a lot of different things, I mean, that we are led to believe coronavirus, uh, built, um, lived on surfaces, we now know that it doesn't. Uh, masks worked, they didn't work, they worked, they didn't work. I mean, I, the CDC and the MDHHs have told us they don't work, even though at the same time they're telling us they work. If you look at the way it's described, they aren't going to work basically the way we're told, okay? The, um, overwhelmingly, the, uh, the country's doctors telling us that science and studies, the masks don't work anywhere near the way we're told. Um, we're told asymptomatic transmission, except there isn't any, okay? In fact, there was a study, asymptomatic means that there's no symptoms. Uh, in June twenty twenty, a study was done by a medical scientist, uh, Ms., um, Kerhove, I think her name is, and she couldn't identify a single study or case that was traced to asymptomatic, um, um, situation. This was a study of ten million people that found zero evidence of spread of the COVID nineteen. Um, the lockdowns, we're told that they're going to get rid of this, but now we know there's so much evidence that proves that it doesn't, it doesn't work. Um, the tests are inaccurate, inaccurate, um, it's simply because they weren't made to be a diagnostic tool. Uh, they're saying everybody's in danger, which now we're finding out that everybody is in danger. I mean, COVID nineteen rates, I mean, everybody probably saw this, especially as a board, I'm sure you've seen this. Um, age zero to nineteen, you have ninety-nine to ninety-nine point seven percent of a survival rate. Age twenty to forty-nine, you have a ninety-nine to ninety-eight percent survival, survival rate. Let's just jump ahead to the worst-case scenario, the ones that we're told they're most liable to get this, and that's seventy to ninety-four, um, seventy-plus, they have a ninety-four point six percent survival rate of this. So it's not, as we're being told, this is not what's going on. Now again, and I just, uh, my notes just went up. What we have to look at, and we can't look at the positivity cases, we have to look at, or rate, we have to look at the hospitalizations or the death rate, which are low, right now they're a lot lower than we're looking at. Uh, another thing is, it's amazing how, once we decided to look at COVID, all of a sudden the yearly influenza just disappeared. In fact, the last time I checked, Michigan didn't even put numbers ahead for that. They decided not to even report on that, I, I just, I'm curious why that would be, um, if we're so told that the yearly influenza is so dangerous. Um, in the meantime, our children, the great point averages are plummeting. Our children are suffering from anxiety. Children, their, their love for school is deteriorating. The futures are being hurt and our parents are feeling punished and suffering in many ways, not to mention it's, it, it's really hard to talk about, but we already lost one precious child in the district. We can stop this, we, we have the power to stop this. Um, we had, the CDC has said that children need to be in school, Fauci has said that children need to be in school, the governor has said children need to be in school. So why they're not in school, I'm not sure. Uh, let's send our kids back to school. I guess we have the power to do this. We're losing children in droves to different school districts and to homeschooling. Are we willing to lose even more? This is going to hurt us in the long term, and I don't even want to talk about financially, but unfortunately that's what that is. I'm talking about lives, everybody keeps on talking about safety, but what I've just said here shows that the safety, it's, it's safer for the children to be in schools. Hybrid, hybrid is good, if that's what we have to deal with, let's go to hybrid, at least it's getting some face time. Uh, the hybrid versus full-time, I would be a vote for going, giving full-time a chance. Okay, but that being said, I am a parent in the district. I am part of the chaos, I am part of the whole thing. No matter what people say, it is not going smooth. And God bless these teachers, they are trying so hard, but this isn't what they've been trained for. We don't go to a doctor to get our care fixed, why would we send our teachers to do a totally different kind of teaching? So, but anyhow, that being said, I guess we'll move on.
Um, Mr. Bednar. Uh, I, um, I, I understand what Mr. Voitovich just said, and I, um, I know people talk about the death rates, but in schools, what we have to be concerned about is the spread also because we have to keep our staff and students healthy as much as we can. Uh, I'm, no one is saying that teachers or students are going to die from it, they're just, but it will be spread and there will be quarantines and there will be, um, challenges to operate and provide education to, to students. Uh, the other thing is, is that we still are not aware of the law, I mean, I'm, I'm supporting hybrid learning, don't get me wrong, and I will support full-time in the, in the future if it makes sense. Um, but you have to, uh, realize, at least I just wanted to clarify with you that the reason we look at spread is because of our ability to operate and how it can be transmitted within our, within the schools because of our community. Um, also, there was a study done in, um, Ohio where the student athletes that, um, that can, that got COVID because of their exposure within this sports program. Thirty percent of the student athletes in Ohio have long-term heart conditions now. So there's many factors that I think we've looked at, I know people don't agree. I know this has been a hardship for families, I, I really, I, sometimes I, when I hear parents talk, I, I feel very, very, uh, bad for them and I understand how hard this is, um, and I know that many people don't agree, but I just wanted to point it, point out why, um, why we look at the spread, at the rate of spread, Mr. Voitovich, I just wanted to confirm with you that, uh, yes, the hospitalizations are important, but in terms of our school operations, how quickly it spreads and how many quarantines and whatnot that we will need also has to be considered, thank you.
Any other comments by the board? Well, I guess in closing, it's, it's, it's been so difficult year on this and, uh, we've heard so much, uh, we've had people come on to our board meetings, community comment or emails from one doctor who, you know, tells us we're, we're going to kill these kids on the back, we've got a doctor of the same profession, the next one coming up saying it's totally, they should be face-to-face. So I mean, we've been facing that since the beginning on this and it continues, so, um, we try to do what's best in our hearts and what we think is going to work based on what the administration, the professionals in our district recommend. Uh, they do the study, the background on this. They can, to consensus and make recommendations to us, and then we decide as a board which, which way we feel is going to be the best way for our community to move forward, so, um, I just think there's, it seems this craziness we've had in our society that, uh, again, you can get numbers from one side that say one thing, one from the other that say the other, and people just fight back and forth, you gotta do what's right in your heart, is my opinion. Anyways, um, so I just wanted to add that. Okay, anything further, the board? All right, Ms. Piden, roll call vote please.
Ms. Dominguez.
Yes.
Ms. Aquino.
Yes.
Dr. Andrea Ashko.
No.
Mr. Bednar.
Yes.
Mr. Sobah.
Yes.
Mr. Voitovich.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Um, six, one, um, motion carries.
Okay, very good, thank you, everybody. Um, all right, we'll move on to H, union communications, do we have any union leadership with us this evening that likes to address the board?
We do not.
Okay.
And Mrs. Levine is on the call, but she did let me know she didn't need to address the board.
And, and just to clarify. And just on that, I want to thank all our employees. I think we've mentioned many times for these meetings that their, their, our employees have been our superstars out there for us, trying to make it, you know, as good or bad as a program that we try to put together, we do our best, but they absolutely do theirs too, and they really are superstars for our Chippewa community and we really, really appreciate their dedication. All right, I'm moving on to administration reports, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things tonight. First, Mr. Bednar, over these past few meetings, you, you have been, you have taken notice of the community and the way they, they respond to the board. And I just want to echo what you have said. We have been in a lot of board meetings and we've listened to a lot of community members. We live in a very volatile time right now in which it seems that people don't always show respect for each other and especially when people disagree about matters that impact them. And our community, I think, has been very impressive in that regard. I mean, we have listened to a lot of community members who maybe have not agreed with recommendations put forward by administration, or maybe they've not agreed with board stance at the end of the night. But I've listened to all these parents and every time they get on, they are very respectful of the process and of the people, and I, I just wanted to make that comment about our community. Because we will get through this and on the other side, we still need to have that respect for each other. So I, I want to applaud our community for that. I also would just like to recognize our three retirees, Denise Cross, Janice McDougall, and Rosemary Dickinson, all wonderful employees. I say this all the time, these people all have more than 30 years of service and each, and each one of them, I don't know what they worked like when they first began as a teacher, but if they worked as hard as they work now as a veteran staff member, they've spent a whole career working really hard and serving the students of Chippewa Valley. So congratulations to those three on their announced retirements. And with that, there are no other administration reports and no curriculum updates this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to K oven by the board? Anything from the board this evening? Okay, I just want to welcome again Dr. Andrea Ashco and Mr. Voitovich to, to our board, our team, and we look forward to working with you here as we move forward. Nothing else, can I have a move to?
Move. I move.
Move by Dr. Andrea Ashco?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Piden? Roll call vote, Ms. Piden please.
Dr. Andrea Ashco?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Aquino?
Yes.
Mr. Bednar?
Yes.
Ms. Demink Zach?
Yes.
Mr. Soba?
Yes.
Mr. Voitovich?
Yes.
Eyes all, motion carries, and our meeting is adjourned at 8:48 PM.
Okay, 8:48 PM. Okay, thank you, everybody, for your comments tonight and keep moving forward with this. Ron will keep us updated as far as what's going on. You know, I ended the meeting, but I was just thinking about the virtual meeting, do we want to stay virtual? Or would you, would you please, if, if you'd like to go to a face-to-face meeting like we'd have at Chippewa Valley High School, please indicate that in an email to Mr. Roberts, if you could.
In fact, Mr. Bednar, I'm going to have Kim send out an email tomorrow and she can just, everyone can respond to Kim individually, okay?
Excellent.
All right.
Okay, good night, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Night.
Bye.